Thank you, everyone, for coming to tonight's City Council meeting, November 2nd, 2022. We're going to ask for Pastor Bailey from the New Beginnings Church for our invocation. Please stand.
Lord, at this time of the year, when our thoughts and attentions turn to Thanksgiving, we first of all want to thank you, Lord, for your goodness, your kindness. Lord, I want to thank you for every City Council member. I'm grateful, Lord, for those willing to serve, those running to serve in whatever capacity. Thank you, Lord, for their willingness and their dedication to serve this local community. I pray that you would bless them and strengthen them. Lord, these are sensitive, vulnerable days. And, Lord, more than anything, I pray that you would give our City Council protection and safety. Lord, I pray against the spirit of violence and lawlessness, and I pray for safety and protection and peace, whether it's City Council, or firefighters, or police, or first responders. Lord, we're headed towards Christmas when we celebrate the birth of the Prince of Peace, and I pray for a wave of peace to be superintended on the city of Las Bannas. And, Father, I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bailey. We'll now call the meeting to order at 6:06. We'll stay remaining standing, and we'll ask Police Chief Reesey for the...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now turn to City Clerk Ms. Melanie for roll call. Here. We have a quorum. Before we make a motion for the consideration of approval agenda, we're going to please make note that the staff has requested that Item 16, City Manager Report, be moved to be heard after Item 8, Update on the City of Las Bannas Recycled Water Efforts, and that Item 12, High Near Road Project Update, be moved to be heard after Item 9, Las Bannas Urban Force Management Plan. I'll now take a motion for consideration approval. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes as stated.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Lamas?
Yes, sir, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Lewis and a second from Councilmember Lamas. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Consideration approval agenda has passed. We'll now move to presentations. There's going to be two presentations tonight. And I'll step down here, we'll start with the first one, and I'll call you up to the... The first one's going to be Recognizing Veterans Day. I get Mr. Hughes, Mr. Allen?
Proclamation, Recognizing Veterans Day. Whereas America was founded on the principle of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all; and whereas Veterans Day is a day in which we recognize the men and women of our armed forces who have violently defended our country's values throughout this nation's history; and whereas by answering the call of duty and risking their lives to protect their fellow countrymen, these patriots have inspired us with their courage, compassion, and dedication; and whereas universal recognition is given to the celebrated ending of World War I, fighting at 11:00 a.m., November 11th, 1918, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month; and whereas there are currently more than 25 million living American veterans, many whom put their lives on the line to preserve our freedoms; and whereas our proud veterans have given our country an extraordinary legacy of patriotism and honor; and their service represents the highest form of citizenship; and whereas in honor of all our proud veterans, the ones that are here today and the ones that have gone before, we invite our community to give a moment of silence and respect and thank you on November 11th, 2022. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor Pro Tem and the City Council members of the City of Las Bannas do hereby celebrate the day of November 11th, 2022, as Veterans Day, and encourage all citizens to give thought to the history, valor, and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate ceremonies and prayers. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the Seal of the City of Las Bannas the second day of November 2022. And we have American Legion Commander Alan Cotta, Patricia McCoy, and Commander of the VFW Michael Hughes.
Mayor Pro Tem, we'd like to thank you for this proclamation. We greatly appreciate it. We hope everyone will come out this Saturday for our Veterans Parade, and I want to thank the city, the council, for putting the flags back up around town. It looks great. We love to see those flags.
Our next one is Recognizing Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Do we have one? Maya? So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Recognizing November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, prostate cancer combined and according to the Centers of Disease Control, there were 1,752,735 new lung cancer cases and 599,589 deaths because of lung cancer between 2015 and 2019 in the United States. And whereas screening for lung cancer using low-dose computed tomography can lead to the early detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality rate by 20%; and whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women. Each year, more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer, and by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas lung cancer is individuals who never smoked is the seventh-leading cause of cancer-related death, and accounts for 17,000 to 26,000 deaths in the U.S. every year. And the preparation of lung cancer diagnosed in people who never smoked is increasing in the U.S. And whereas lung cancer research is leading to breakthroughs in the identification of genetic altercations associated with lung cancer and in the development of lung cancer treatments, including... That's a big word. ...target therapies. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor Pro Tem and the City Council members of the City of Las Bannas do hereby proclaim November 2027 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the Seal of the City of Las Bannas the second day of November 2022. Thank you.
All right, that concludes the presentations. We'll now move to the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of the public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chambers information table. And I want to remind those in the council chambers to either turn their cell phones off or sound silent.
I haven't come to talk again. I've come to a lot of meetings to ask. We've asked, we've begged, we've told you, all of you guys, everything that has been happening. I live in the mobile home park by where you guys put the homeless. Those people are not listening to the police. They don't care what we think, they don't care what you think. And I've been trying to figure out why it is that you guys are not trying to help us. I came up with an idea, and I believe with all my heart that it is true. You guys are not helping us because the majority of the people who live in the mobile home park are Mexicans or Black people, and I honestly feel that the majority of you guys are prejudiced. We don't have many. We're Mexicans, we're Black people. If you guys went over there yourselves and lived there, you would have moved fast. Like you, I talked to you the other day. You told me, because I have come here in front of you guys and told you about the man that was running around naked when the kids were playing outside of our mobile homes, and you told me that you had seen the same thing, but yet I have never heard or seen anything paper written, whatever, nor to the police about what you saw. To me, that is really wrong, because what if one of the kids would have gotten raped or killed? It wouldn't have bothered you that you didn't speak out? I'm speaking out because I don't want that to happen to any child. I don't care if they're purple or whatever color they are. I don't care. But I feel that you guys do care because we're not white, because we don't have many. You guys aren't helping us. We have been coming here year after year, asking, begging for your help. Every night, there's fires out there, I see police cars out there for hours sitting there, but nobody does anything. They keep, they'll turn off the fires, within an hour, they have fires going again. I've called 911, I don't know how many times. All they do is go out, turn the fire off, and nobody gets tickets. If I started a fire in front of my house, I would get a ticket, and I would deserve it. But these guys, they're just, "Don't do that again." Oh. You guys need to do something. You honestly need to do something because I don't want the worst thing to happen, and you guys know what I'm talking about. I'm so afraid that one of our children, I don't have any little ones, but the other people do. I would be horrified if something happened to one of those kids. If those people were to molest them or kill them, it would be on your heads. I don't want that for you guys, I don't want it for me either. So you guys, please, help us.
Thank you.
If I may, I wanted to say a word of thanks to the City Council. Last time I was here, I gave an invitation to the entire City Council to attend New Beginnings Harvest Fund Fest, which we had on Monday night, October 31st, from 5:30 to 8:00. I am happy to report that we had the most successful and largest Harvest Fund Fest that we've ever had. I think I can still adequately proclaim that Harvest Fund Fest at New Beginnings is the largest event in Las Bannas on what has been called Halloween. We distributed wristbands to 2,700 people between the hours of 5:30 and 8:00, and we had over 100 volunteers handing out candy, managing games that didn't get wristbands. So there was a total of about 2,800 people. I want to thank Councilman Yamas who came, I want to thank Councilwoman Lewis that came, even the candidate for mayor, Mr. Yamas, came. I got a, I got a political promise, campaign promise, that if he's elected mayor, he'll come next year as mayor to Harvest Fund Fest at New Beginnings, and I want to thank the City Council. God bless you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shandra Lewis. I live in Las Bannas, I reside at Rancho Las Bannas Mobile Home Park. Last month, we met on, well, I shouldn't say we met, we had a phone conversation with one of the councilmen. I felt it was more of a threat than it was a promise of help. It was, if we move them, they're going to come back and get on your fence. And so, don't say anything. Don't, don't ask to move them, because when we, if we let them move and we take down the encampment, then they're going to come back on your fence. That, I felt, was a threat to us as to not have a reason to move them. Also, it was reiterated to us that they are very dangerous, that they carry all weapons, that the stench, they can't even stand to go in there because the stench is so bad. You don't think that stench waffles over to our property and the vermin that they carry doesn't come over? It does. So the threat was taken not so lightly, because I feel like I have no value to Las Bannas. I have no value to you as a person. We, as residents, have no value to you, that the homeless who all have weapons, who light and set off fires are more important to you. Those who explode the propane tanks, and I am getting, I'm waking up in the middle of the night scared. Because you can, this city does not consider us having any value. We are a mobile home park. So I don't know if you think of us as trailer trash, but there are many people that live in there of all different walks of life. There are grocery store clerks, there is one that works at the courthouse, we have teachers, we have all kinds of walks of life, and we choose to live there, not always because we don't have money. We choose to live there because it gives us affordability to do things that we could not afford if we had to pay $3,000 or $4,000 a month for a home payment. That doesn't mean that I'm not worth it, life. My life is worth something, and my life... And I have a question for the interim city manager. What are you wanting to do for us? What do you want to do? What do you want to see happen? Do you want us to keep in danger? Or do you want to improve the city? Because our lives are at stake. And this is what I have to say. I feel like we have been threatened more than we have been promised hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get Commander Reyna up here as well, please? My name is Daniel Freeman. I'm captain with the Los Banos Fire Department. Got a little presentation for Commander Reyna here today. After the retirement of Chief Hurley, and quite frankly, half of our fire department, we were left without a chief and an assistant chief. We started to hear some rumors that someone from the police department was going to come over and help out in admin position. Obviously, there were a few concerns from our guys. I mean, there's no way a cop can, is going to know how to run a fire department, right? He's not going to understand how important our dinnertime is and how much rest we actually need throughout the day. And he'll severely underestimate the, how cool firemen really are. So I can't tell you how wrong we were about Commander Reyna. He showed up at the fire station, immediately started having a positive impact on our crews. Morale around the station instantly turned around. He came in with the presence and demeanor of someone who had been in the position for years. Commander Reyna very easily could have come over, signed our bills, made sure the place wasn't falling apart, and gone on with his career at the police department. But that's not what he did. He committed to our fire department 100%, not only professionally but personally, regularly checking on us to see how we were doing as individuals and how our families were. Commander made it clear to all of us he was available 24 hours a day for whatever we needed. He genuinely cared about us as individuals and our careers. The members of our fire department and the citizens of Los Banos can never repay Commander Reyna for what he's done over the last six months for us. I hope as a council and a city, you all recognize how great of a person and employee you have in Commander Reyna. As a small token of our appreciation, we'd like to present Commander Reyna with his helmet. On a personal note from me, Commander, thank you. Thank you for having the confidence in me. Thank you for caring about me. And thank you for leaving us when you didn't have to. Hopefully, one day, we can repay you.
Make it real quick. Wow, I didn't anticipate this at all. This is, this is outstanding. This is great. This will go in my office and I'll cherish it. For those of you who don't know, in Los Banos and in many fire departments, the yellow hat firefighter, engineer, red, I'm sorry, helmet. I'm still learning how to talk like a firefighter. The red helmet is captain and white chief, right? So I appreciate that. This is outstanding. I had a great time. This will probably be, this go down as one of the best assignments I've ever had while working for the city of Los Banos. I got to meet all of you and work all of you, with all of you. You guys call me your brother, and I feel the same way. So you guys are all outstanding people. And I will say as well, the city of Los Banos has an outstanding fire department. The people that come to work there every day are outstanding. The meals, I thought there was going to be more meals. I thought, I, they're up at night, they're up during the day, and they are just machines. So I appreciate it. Thank you all so much for the last six months. It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Jim Romig. I'm Mayor of Los Banos. And I just want to thank you for a few minutes here. I want to express my appreciation for Mr. Mayor, Zuny Mayor, Police Chief, all the police department and city council members, city officials, and the good people of Los Banos. Good evening. I would like to thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk about a plan that will, I believe, help greatly in not only providing housing for those that are homeless in our beautiful city of Los Banos, but in the process, help us work closer with the homeless to find a better and more productive life for them and in turn, help our city. I believe that, I believe there was a PowerPoint presentation and draft plan that was emailed to you all last week for your review describing the situation and issues concerning homelessness here in town. In that presentation, there were two links, which I hope you took the time to view as well. We, Bruce Metcalf with Merced County Rescue Mission and others, believe this avenue a very doable and affordable solution. I believe we all are very aware of the great work that Bruce Metcalf and his staff are doing with the Merced County Rescue Mission regarding homelessness over in Merced and here in Los Banos. There are two four- and five-bedroom bridge homes here in Los Banos, plus a four-bedroom respite home care facility that not only houses the homeless, but also assists them getting back on their feet. I'm thankful for these homes, but we all know that there is a greater need here in Los Banos. And I believe working with Custom Container 915 and its owner and CEO, John Glavine, is a very affordable and doable answer to our homeless issues. John Glavine and his company, Custom Container, has successfully constructed and is presently working on housing projects in Arizona, Newark, New Jersey, Portland, Oregon, Tracy, California, and getting ready to break ground in Merced in the next couple of weeks, which will produce 20 nice units in a short period of time. These projects, which are communities, are nicely done with small bedrooms, bathrooms, showers, kitchen facility, and an onsite managers unit. A case manager will be made available for drug, alcohol, and mental counseling provided by the Merced County Rescue Mission. The Rescue Mission will be managing these facilities. Who better than Merced County Rescue Mission? The staff at Merced County Rescue Mission is quite large, and I'm told that between 85% and 90% of them have gone through the program. This tells us that working side by side with the homeless gives them hope, elevating their self-esteem, which in turn produces great results. The funding for construction will be made available through Home Key Funding, and the vouchers for rents for the tenants will be, will be supplied through HUD. I am told that there is a law on the books making it illegal to camp on the streets and public land. But until housing is provided to get the homeless off of our streets, I'm told this law cannot be enforced. This is, I believe, a very doable and productive way for our homeless in our city of Los Banos. Again, thank you for this opportunity to present this amazing opportunity to you, our city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Patricia McCoy. I'm the chairperson for the Los Banos Veterans Parade. Just want to remind everybody that the parade is this Saturday, November 5th. It starts at 11:00 a.m. We purposely hold our parade the week before Veterans Day is not to try to compete with Merced or Fresno. We, while we honor all veterans, this year's theme is salute to the Navy. I'm excited to announce that if you saw a recent newspaper, it said we had over 60 entries, but since then, we now have over 70 entries. And with 11 of our schools participating in our most patriotic school contest, and also, all four school bands and color guards will also be in the parade. On another note, I'd like to take this opportunity to let you know that the next, I'm sorry, that next week, the local American Legion and VFW will be doing flag raising at three of our Los Banos schools in honor of Veterans Day. And that's really exciting. One of the others, one of the schools later in the month is also allowing us to be on campus to do a flag etiquette program, something that I think more of the schools should be participating in. Lastly, I'd like to ask the community to take notice of the over 900 flags that will be displayed throughout Los Banos on Veterans Day. This is part of a fundraising effort for our local posts. And if you'd like to know more about the flag program, our commemorative plaque wall, the Atlas Telehealth Pod, and also to see other upcoming events that the American Legion and VFW are doing in the community, please visit our website at losbanosveterans.com. And then, I know I said lastly, but one more thing is, a few years ago, there was a program that was started by a commercial company called Green Light Evet. And it's, it took traction. So on Veterans Day, or the days leading up to it, you're encouraged to put a green lightbulb on your front porch, and that's just to show you're, an outward symbol of supporting our veterans on Veterans Day. So thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Davis, and I'm running for mayor as a riding candidate, as you know probably at least those on the council and few outside. As you know, my campaign was mostly under social media, like Facebook and the Nextdoor app. Because I started late to this campaign, I get in too late. And because of that, a lot of people contacted me and asked me how to meet, where to meet. So I started these social media platforms. Also, after today's meeting, I will start the YouTube live chats so that people can interact with me back and forth. Because working hours sometimes not allows people to attend the events if I find an indoor venue and arrange a Q&amp;A session in there. Los Banos Enterprise also had an article about my candidacy, and at the end of the article, they put my email address, which is the best way to contact me, too. My month-long campaign was like a revelation for me that, like I mentioned on my last council meeting speeches, that I wasn't involved that much deeply in a personal level to the city politics. And once you get into and learn the deep down and hearing the stories, the opinions, especially after I met each and every one of you, the council members, and some city employees, other departments, and other city organizations, like the chamber and other ones, it becomes a little bit depressing in some sort, but also, I tend to be hopeful for what will be happening in the future, too. I'm sure you heard the term the kingmakers. Those are the political kind of bookworms. They stay behind the curtains and behind the candidates, but they are involved in every campaign. They arrange all the stuff. They know ins and outs of the all inner politics, what's going on, who is where, what happened, the history of the elections in this town over 25, 30 years, almost. So I met with a few of them. Actually, they came, contacted me out of nowhere. I didn't know they would even exist around this area. And we had long meetings, about two, two and a half hour meetings with them. At the end, they said, yep, your points, your ideas, everything they said you're saying is spot on, but they said, we have to tell you the truth. I said, yes, go ahead. They said, your chance is slim to none for two reasons. First, they said, you're not a known name into the city. Like, if you looked, they said, past 24, 25 years, between Amabel, Rialta, Faria, they said these were long-term residents of the Los Banos. They were teacher for 37 years, or the business owners of a famous restaurant. All these people were prominent figures in town, and they've been elected as a mayor. So they said, with your unknown name, even though your idea is good, you may be a really great candidate. They said, hmm, that's the half of your chance gone in there. The other half, they said, who recruited you first? I said, nobody. My wife, I said, told me to run. We talked with her. They said, well, your finances, they said, doesn't look good. What you have? I said, what do you mean? Donations, how much you collected? Well, I said, not much. I mean, just only $884. I said, I spent from my pocket. That's the extent of my campaign finances. Then I've been told that the, if I know that my opponent in the race, they said, already invested over $100,000 into this mayoral election since last election. I said, no. And I told them that the, if I told my wife that I need $100,000 to invest in a mayor campaign for a position that pays $400 a month, I said, the only document she will make me sign, I said, would be our divorce papers. So, election is in a week. I just joined this race as an alternative. And for those of you out there who would like to make a difference, a change since last 24 years, the way you want it brought us you to the situation you're currently in, city council currently in. And the choice is yours, Los Banos. You can either go the same way you did in the past or try something new. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
All right, good evening, council. For those who don't know me, my name is Paul Yanez. I am the only name on the ballot this year for mayor. And so I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I'm not here to campaign because I know that FPPC would probably say that's not very legal. But instead, I'm here to talk about an item you have on the agenda, closed session item that I read regarding reopening possible negotiations with the bargaining units of the police department, the fire department, and our dispatchers. I will tell you, as someone with experience, I wore the uniform for 12 and a half years here. I still do two days a month as an unpaid reserve, which my wife thinks I'm nuts, by the way. I'm here to tell you about the brave men and women that wear all sorts of uniforms, police, fire, and dispatch, and how the word that, when asked, comes to mind is unappreciated. That word has been heavy in, I'm sure, all three departments for a very long time. After learning of new, you know, financial things with the city and financial information, I do want to commend interim CM Wellman for having the conversation and talking about it as opening up possible negotiations. Because I'm just going to tell you, you are bleeding public safety people. Tonight, you saw a presentation where our police commander filled in as a fire chief. You're not going to hear that in very many cities, right? That is a problem. And so the fact that you're willing to have the discussion tonight in closed session, please talk realistic goals. Please talk realistic numbers. You are losing people at an alarming rate. And as somebody who's probably going to have that seat next month, I'm more concerned as a citizen and as a parent of what these brave men and women do while not being appreciated. So again, I'm just going to be a voice for them tonight. And again, as you go into closed session, I just want you to think about the opportunities we have in this city, the finances that are available, and how you can help the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is Cheryl Saros, and I don't represent Bethel on this night, but I am from Bethel Community Church as a homeless liaison. Everybody's right, yes, there is a problem with the homeless, but it's about time that the city finally recognized that we have a homeless problem. I've done homeless connects, I've done homeless counts, and I can honestly say, the past three years, last year was the worst. We are getting homeless that have dropped off from other counties. We've got homeless that have dropped off from other states. I can honestly say, there is no danger. I deal with every- Tonight, you saw a presentation where our police commander filled in as a fire chief. You're not going to hear that in very many cities, right? That is a problem. And so the fact that you're willing to have the discussion tonight in closed session, please talk realistic goals. Please talk realistic numbers. You are losing people at an alarming rate. And as somebody who's probably going to have that seat next month, I'm more concerned as a citizen and as a parent of what these brave men and women do while not being appreciated. So again, I'm just going to be a voice for them tonight. And again, as you go into closed session, I just want you to think about the opportunities we have in this city, the finances that are available, and how you can help the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is Cheryl Saros, and I don't represent Bethel on this night, but I am from Bethel Community Church as a homeless liaison. Everybody's right, yes, there is a problem with the homeless, but it's about time that the city finally recognized that we have a homeless problem. I've done homeless connects, I've done homeless counts, and I can honestly say, the past three years, last year was the worst. We are getting homeless that have dropped off from other counties. We've got homeless that have dropped off from other states. I can honestly say, there is no danger. I deal with everybody, every one of them, on a once-in-one basis. I know all their first names. I'm actually friendly with their families. And the reason why that is, because for three years in Los Banos, I was one of those homeless. So when Ms. Lewis refers to them as those people, Sandra, who's, it's kind of insulting. Some of those people have mental illnesses, and they're not homeless by choice. I get it, there are homeless that are out there by choice. Now, LBPD has been the greatest supporters of outreach, working with the church. And I tend to agree with that. I don't think room key is going to be the solution, but home key is. It's just up to you to decide what the budget is and where you want it. And then, I mean, there'll be people that put in footwork to get bids and, you know, do counseling, whatever it takes. There's plenty of counselors at mental health that I know, because, once again, I was a patient in mental health, and now I take classes to become a substance abuse counselor. So, you know, once city council gets it together and lets the public know, or lets another agency know what they want done, we can get it done. And we can help a lot of people out there as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have anyone else in the room? No one else is in the room? We'll ask City Clerk Ms. Melanie if there's any.
I have one comment. Good evening, council members and staff. I apologize for not being there tonight to directly address you. My name is Blanche. I would like to thank you, to you, the staff, including the department heads and employees of the city, that you are all working to help our residents that are homeless. I can see all your faces of concern for all the community and this complex issue. At the last city council meeting, there was, there was direction and vote on what you are planning for the homeless in the future. I know you have thoughts where to go from here, because our homeless neighbors need help and direction now. These human beings are in this stage in their lives that they cannot get out without assistance, and each person has a story how this happened. I have been visiting the homeless and quietly listening, connecting and also assisting with help with some friends, groups, and agencies, all collaborating and finding common ground. There are different stages, groups of homeless, some which you know, but some people may not know. They were living paycheck to paycheck and lost their jobs. They live below the poverty line, and income doesn't come close to pay for someplace to live. Some have vehicles but lost their home, but still go to work or school. Some live in cars with no home, no job. A surprising group are women. Some have children and pets. Additionally, some live in vehicles and campers. Let me give some quick examples of what I see and experience. In the encampment I currently visit, besides our pockets of homeless, I see people like this respectful and kind lady that she loves her potted plants. She grows them from clippings and offers them to others. There is a man that I call the builder with a very disciplined dog that keeps to himself, but will be polite enough to introduce himself and does not help others with their tents. There is even a tent with an American flag on it. I was also asked if I voted. I saw on Saturday, when visiting the homeless encampment, some are all together playing horseshoes and others playing cards. We in Los Banos are compassionate people with a let's-help attitude. Shouldn't the headline be about our city that we put rules in place for immediate assistance to help all? Scheduled agencies to have boots on the ground on a scheduled basis? Some of those agencies receive are ready to help. We would welcome them on the west side. We can get them on a schedule to come out and let our homeless families and individuals buy into it. They will, they will with the right approach. There are also good groups out there that are ready to help. We need to soon pull out a calendar and get some regular assistance for these neighbors, and after a proper introduction with someone or a group they trust, until something more permanent is ready and ready to take the baton. I was speaking to a friend and was struggling to find the correct word for what I was thinking. I use words on actions we need to do, like awareness, guidance, training, determining eligibility, enrollment, school selection, access to services, transportation. And my kind friend gave me the perfect word. He said, yes, it's a management issue. I agree. We can do this, Los Banos. I will leave by closing with this. Home was never a dream for homeless people as they used to have their own homes. Living in a home was their reality. Now we need to help them find the lost reality again. Said by Christian Armin. Thanks for listening. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Melanie. If no one, we'll go ahead and close the public forum, and we'll move to the next item, item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. We'll turn to Ms. Melanie.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 235577 through 235741, in the amount of $688,005.12. Minutes for the October 5, 2022, city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6572, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6573, awarding the bid for the purchase of two new 2022, 2023, one-ton model, medium-duty utility trucks with liftgate. Authorize the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Sanus Ford in the amount of $157,890. City Council Resolution Number 6574, awarding the bid for the purchase of four new 2022, 2023, three-quarter-ton model, medium-duty utility trucks with liftgate. Authorize the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to issue the purchase order to Sanus Ford in the amount of $309,820, and amend the budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, as it pertains to expenditures. City Council Resolution Number 6575, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a professional service agreement, and authorize the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to administer the professional service agreement with Crisp Company for on-call striping and marking maintenance. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Melanie. I will now turn to the council, if there's any items to be pulled for separate. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd like to pull item 7F for discussion, and we'll just take it off as a separate vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, would you like to make a motion for, to go ahead and minus that, item F?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minus item F.
Do I have a second? Mr. Alamos?
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Ms. Lewis to accept the consent agenda, minus F, and a second from Mr. Alamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No one knows? Okay, the consent agenda passed. We'll now go to Ms. Lewis to speak on number F. There you go.
I have a few questions for staff after reading this report. The first question I have was, is this the only company near us or out of the Bay Area, out of Fresno, that does this type of work? Or were there other bids that were submitted?
This was the only bid that was received. There are other companies, but not to this scales. Crisp Company has offices in the Bay Area as well as in Fresno, and they are doing all the work for CalTram, but in this area also. And we are from Highway 152 to Highway 5.
Okay. And I noticed in the report, it said that it was going to be effective November 22, but I also noticed in, November 2, I'm sorry, in the contract, those dates are left blank. So I would assume that after this meeting, based on what council decides, that staff will come up with a date. And it looks like it may be sometime on or after November 16, or somewhere around there. Okay. And then lastly, I was reading in the report, one of their job duties would be to paint curbsides where fire hydrants are. And I noticed, in our city, typically, we only paint the side curbs red in the downtown area, but we don't do it in the residential area. Are we going to start doing that in the residential area? Because I've noticed that there are people who just park in front of fire hydrants because it's convenient for them, and they don't consider what the law is. I mean, there's nothing, red usually tells people, don't park here. So I was just wondering, are we going to start painting in our, in our residential area where fire hydrants are?
Councilmember Lewis, currently, we do not have programs to paint new locations. This is really the supplements in an event that our staff, our current staff, cannot get to those ones that need to be refreshed. Per the California Vehicle Codes, the parking violation for blocking a fire hydrant is affected whether or not the red curb is in place, and that is 15 feet from each side of the fire hydrants. I do understand that red does provide an additional visual deterrent for these, and we can review that accordingly.
All right. So at this particular time, there's, there's no provisions for doing any residential areas?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr.?
All right, thank you, Ms. Lewis. You want to go ahead and make the motion? Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7F in the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Alamos?
I'll second that, sir.
All right, I think I have a motion from Councilmember Lewis for the Resolution Number 6575, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a professional service agreement, and authorize the Public Works Director, City Engineer, to administer the professional service agreement with Crisp Company on on-call striping and marking maintenance. And it was seconded by Alamos. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, it passed. We'll now move on to the next item. This is going to be item eight, update on the city of Los Banos recycled water efforts. We'll turn to the city manager, interim city manager, Mr. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. As you probably can see, the, this is the second summary report that you have received on water in general, wastewater, stormwater, freshwater. And it's very apropos that, that we do that now. I'm going to ask, Neuron, is there a... I'd ask to, I haven't had a chance to see this in advance, so this is hot off the press, but we have representatives of, thank you, of the water districts here with us and other esteemed people that are expert in the water area. If I, if I may, can you, can you raise your hand or stand up so the audience can see you? We'll start with Rick Ortega from Grasslands Water District. Thank you, Rick. And to his, to his left will be, I've got my names mixed up here, but Chris White. And you can tell him by his hat, anywhere he is. Next would be Tony Whitehurst from Los Banos. He's well-known, and I had an opportunity to serve with Tony when he was a member of the Merced County Board of Supervisors. And that was quite a number of years ago, but late 80s, first of the 90s. We next have Austin Yule, who I think has described himself as a recovering attorney, but is an expert in water law and putting parties together for mutual benefit. I hope I have not left anybody out, have I? Okay. Mr. Protem, the, the effort here, and thank you for that, Neuron. If, do you want to, for all of us, tell us what's before us? I wanted the council and the audience to have a map as to particularly CCID, Grasslands, and others that relate to the city, and just, just how large they are. Now, as a former chief executive of the county, I've got to admit, I had no idea, and I probably should have, but I had no idea that, that these districts were this large.
So, mayor and council, so if you can see on the, on the screen there, this map is just of a CCID district map, so I just kind of show you a little bit of a scales of the partnership that we have been involving with our water district here. As you can see in the map here, to your right, which is facing south, that is, CCID extend all the way into Mendota, and it's go as far north as the Crow Landings on the east side, on the west side of Los Banos. And then on the next slide, here, it kind of show you the entire maps of the Delta Mendota sub-basin, which we belong to, as well as a map of Grasslands, which is that you can see. So on the right-hand side there, the gray are the hatch area, those are the Grassland Water District area. And then the blue side on the left, that is the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors jurisdictions, as you can see. That includes CCID and other water districts. The city of Los Banos is right in the middle of that area, it's right there, you can see by Highway 152. So that, just to give you a little bit more of a geographical sense of the kind of partners and other jurisdiction that we are involved with here. City managers, back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Protem and members of the council, I think it would be fair to say that, and I've woven this in the last two summary reports you've had, that these are exploratory efforts, and that, in my view, I've not just paid attention to city and county government, I've actually managed three water districts in the last 10 years. I think there's a fantastic opportunity here to join forces, especially in this time where water is, is on everybody's mind, to look at strategies that we might employ to mutually benefit all parties. It's got to be a win-win-win across the board. I'm not trying to make, if I may, can I call one of these folks up just to chat? Chris, can, can I ask you to come up and give us your sage wisdom on this? Chris is one of the first ones that I, that I talked to, and he's been around a number of years in, in the water business. He's a former director of CCID. And the one person that I didn't recognize was Jarrett Martin, if he's out there.
Outside canal.
Oh, dear, okay.
So he's out there marshaling those forces to get that back on track.
Understood. And we should point out that Mr. White is the former executive director of the Central California Irrigation District, for those of you who don't know.
I was the general manager, so you can tell how old the district is. If it's a general manager, it's an old district. If it's an executive director, it's new-fangled, okay? And I managed that district for 25 years. So my history here is, came to town in 1977, and I went to work for Stoddard and Associates back in those days. Young surveyor. We were, in those days, Stoddard's was the, was the, under contract, the district engineer. And so I kind of grew up doing surveying in this town, working on storm drainage. I surveyed the, the first... I surveyed the first expansion of the sewer treatment plant and the secondary treatment site. I actually did the surveying for the last expansion of the sewer treatment plant to the north. I've climbed all over the storm drainage system in this, I mean, all over in my career, so I know it very well. And one of the things that came to my attention is that there's some opportunity here, and there's some real opportunity for some projects, just using a little creativity and just knowing the system, that there's some opportunity for some real recharge to help provide a water balance for the city. And so, you know, I've thrown some ideas out to Mr. Wellman and to Rick Ortega, and I've, you know, it's very seldom that you get water guys excited about something, and there's some exciting opportunities, and we just say that. So Greg, is that...
That's exactly a good start. May I ask Rick to come up, and as well as Yule, Tony? You guys all have benefit of experience.
And while they're walking up here, let me just say that that first map, that water system was started in 1871. It was completed here through the Los Banos by 1873. The first water supply for the city came off that canal. And it was, it came to a water tower over on I Street until 1919, when there was a fire that burnt that part of the city down, and then the water treatment moved over to where it's at now, over on Center. At that, I wrote an article on this, it's a reason I know for the paper.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I couldn't agree more with Chris. There's, there are some exciting opportunities that we've been discussing, some potential stormwater basins just to the east of town that can take a lot of your stormwater pressure off of our system, frankly, at a time when we're usually flooded, you know, going through flood control opportunities. We ran some preliminary numbers on this 160-acre parcel that the city already owns. Just looking at schedules roughly, we think we could provide 5,000 acre-feet of recharge. So there's those types of opportunities, and then also, we've been looking at opportunities on wastewater treatment front. So partnering with the Yule Group and Frank Sreamy on looking into really what's it going to cost to get the city to advanced treatment, and how we might be able to make those economics work with both public and private dollars.
Rick, one thing. Primary treatment, taking out the obvious solids. Secondary treatment, removing suspended solids. And third-stage treatment or tertiary treatment, getting it almost to drinking water standards. It's pretty expensive, although you'll see some executives come out in a political show, and they'll actually, they'll take a full glass of water and down it. How does the amount that you've just cited deal with the city's overdraft? In other words, the amount that we're taking out of the system, or aqua sub-basin, if you will? Can you put that in perspective for us, please?
You know, the city is, I think, embarking, they're currently in a state of overdraft, right? And the numbers off of the top of my head, it isn't an enormous number, but the city is growing rapidly, right? And so this really buys you opportunity to continue to grow. On the stormwater front, it's the same situation. You currently don't have the facilities to accommodate a whole lot more stormwater going forward. So we're thinking about a multi-pronged approach to solving both the city's water balance and also stormwater. Some of the stormwater concepts that we're anticipating actually could improve the drinking water quality to the City of Los Banos at certain wells. And so I've taken it upon myself to commission Ken Schmidt, hydrogeologist here, a local expert, and he's preparing a proposal that further investigates this and the stormwater concept.
I have a question from Ms. Lewis.
Yes, that's a question I have, and Mr. Wellman, maybe you can answer this, or some of the people from the water district. But with the growth in our community and the water drought that we've been going through, and who knows whether we're going to go through in the future, if we'll start getting substantial rain? But has there been any talk about how long you think the state is going to let us walk in this direction with our sewer treatment, and when we might have to build an advanced treatment center?
I can try to answer that, if I may. It really depends on what area of the state you're in. However, the state is not in favor of open ponded systems. I don't see it on the map here, but we have seven ponds. The total area is four, the capacity is 4.9 million gallons per day. The average throughput, as I understand it, and Neuron, correct me if I'm off here, is 3.5 to 3.7 per day. But the exciting thing to me is that we've got a chance to not only treat this water, but to potentially offload it to a couple of canals that are nearby. One is Santa Fe.
Santa Fe Canal.
And the other, thank you, is San Luis. You know, this could be a match made in heaven if we get permission to do so. And as a former UC Merced project director, I will tell you that working with environmental agencies is always a challenge. I'm not here to put them down in any way, shape, or form, but it's tough to get things done, and it takes you twice as long as you legitimately think it should take. So...
And this, as you've explained it to us, is this at our current pond treatment, that we can filter this water and send it out? Or are you talking about having to build a plant and do that?
I don't think that we have done enough pointed exploratory work to answer that question, but that is a question that's very, very good. I mean, the first thing I ask is, given our current capacity, can we serve all of those building projects that are currently being raised from the ground? And let's take a two- or three-year look at things. Can we, in addition to that, serve those that are in the queue? I think that that assessment is still to be done. However, we have a number of companies and individuals that have come forward with ideas. But again, virtually everything that we do has got to be competitive. It's invariably subject to federal hour, federal standards.
The wages.
Yeah. And so that's kind of what the exploratory meetings are all about, is what are the next recommended steps? What are the questions that we have that we would have hoped to have answered? And what do we do? And I'm mindful that we've got a gentleman here in the name, by the name of Yule, last name Yule, first name Austin, Austin Yule, that's been involved in these projects before. I think it's the Turlock Project, is it?
Atwater.
Atwater, well, yeah, funny thing. I managed Atwater for about eight years. But can you give us a real quick rundown on what you did, for the council?
Got a hot mic? All right. Evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me. Thank you for the kind words on the introduction, and as noted by the two previous gentlemen, unique opportunity and something that we've seen throughout the valley and really throughout the state, which is a focus at looking at existing facilities and the opportunities that come with advancing those facilities and what you do with those water supplies. And so, as noted with the districts that were mentioned, that I've worked with and worked for, we've had very successful projects, by instance, in the City of Atwater, as well as the City of Turlock, where they've looked at taking their existing facilities, what advancement might be needed in those facilities, and what water, what additional water can be produced, and then what that water can be used for. And so in doing so, as Mr. Wellman had mentioned, just initial stages of kind of exploring these concepts, what is presently kind of before us, and what opportunities might exist, and then, you know, the partnerships that may be there in order to accomplish those respective goals. So really neat, I think, as expressed, you know, there's optimism, some potential paths forward that I think put, you know, put the city in a strong position moving forward, recognizing its growth and what it wants to accomplish. So we've seen, we've seen these same success stories throughout the valley, and look for an opportunity to replicate that here in the City of Los Banos.
How is Turlock coming along?
Excellent. It's, it completed its project and is in operation, and I think all the project parties, and some of which are here, would confirm the wonderful partnership and a great success, and great to look to emulate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehurst, can you sign off for us?
Thank you very much. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to just be here. Repeating what's already been said would be worthless. It's so, it's so important, so significant, but what I'd really like to say is, I'd like to congratulate not only the council for their openness and willingness to have these discussions, but also to our interim city manager for putting together the boldness, taking the fear out of asking the questions that we're asking, how many years we've worried about our capability of dealing with growth, and what our challenges were if we were to accept growth without the kind of questions being asked that you're asking now. Can we handle it? Can we support it? And what you see before you, what you've heard, the gentleman you've heard from represent probably one of the most significant, powerful group of water agencies that's ever been put together in central California. And that gives us, their partnership and their willingness to cooperate with us creates an opportunity that we've never had before. And for me, as just a representative of the area with some history and ability to communicate with a variety of agencies, public and private, and the city as well, it's a thrill for me to be involved and to be near it and watch it happen, because this is a turning point, and it will always be referred to as one, because we now have, instead of, not antagonistic, but counterparts on the other side of an argument about who gets the water and who treats the water and who... You just, you just don't realize at first how significant that is. We have a team of people who are willing to partner with us and cooperate with us for all of our mutual benefits, and it's to be cherished. It won't, it won't ever do us any harm, nothing but good, and the more effort and time we put into it, the more we're going to gain. And it's a pleasure to work with them all, and it's an even greater pleasure to know that you're accepting the results of that work as the benefit of Los Banos. So, thank you.
Mr. Protem, there's a couple of things I think that even if I could more, I'm looking at interim finance, we have a lot of interim people around, including me.
Our interim finance director, Brent Kuhn, K-U-H-N. And I said, today, I was, I said, Brent, you know, how are we going to put all this stuff together? He said, well, Greg, first thing you got to realize is that the City of Los Banos has no debt. And I said, well, I'm from Missouri on that one, prove it to me. And he did. I mean, it's entirely unusual. I mean, I don't know another jurisdiction that I can name that has no debt. You may.
Not with enterprise funds. But there's still opportunities.
Well, that wasn't my point, but yes. So we have this before you again to respectfully ask for your continued support, and while I'm here, which by the way, is probably going to terminate sometime mid to latter December. And I'm prohibited by law from working any more than 960 hours, and, but we're going to dam the torpedoes while I'm here and get as much done as we can, so that when some of us are no longer here, it doesn't make any difference, that the project can move ahead. And this will be a legacy, you know, it's going to make us all real happy, I think. So we'll make you a progress report every city council meeting. We don't want to get out in front of you one iota, is you'll see, I use the term exploratory, because everything is not, when you get parties together, as you know, there's going to have to be some give and take. So the city's interests, and certainly the water contractors' interests, and Grasslands, and CCID, and San Andreas are not always going to come in perfect alignment, and that's going to take some meeting. But if you, if you look at the benefits of doing this, to not try would almost be a sacrilege, in my way of thinking. I've probably said enough.
All right. So you want to go ahead and close that item?
Yes, please.
And then move to your city manager report? Close item 18, and then move to 16, city manager report.
Yes, city managers' report, I'm going to keep it brief and just hold myself open for questions, but I did want to say one thing on, and he's gone with his son now, I think, but Ray Rena, is he gone? Paul Tuella, our current chief, is, his first day was yesterday, and I know he's been introduced before, but I'd be remiss, Paul, do you want to say a couple of words?
I just want to thank you. I know that I already did introductions last month, but one thing I do want to say is I want to thank Commander Rena for his leadership and his role that he played prior to my arriving to the city. He's done a lot of legwork, very, very happy with the things that he kind of set forth and made things a little bit easier for me as I came in. So I really appreciate the work that he did. As you saw with the firefighter group, they really appreciated having him around, and that was a great, that was a great gift to give him, so, thank you.
Mr. Protem, I thank you, chief, and welcome, again, welcome aboard, and, you know... Mr. Protem, I thank you, chief, and welcome, again, welcome aboard, and, you know, don't be a stranger. I, you know, Ray is in all the time. I, I've got a story with Ray, I'm not going to tell it now, but I worked with his father fifty-three years ago, I guess. It's kind of hard to even say that, but, yeah. So, I have a picture, I'm not going to show anybody, but there's this very handsome Hispanic couple, and, and Ray showed me this the first time I showed up here at City Hall, and there was a very controversial meeting going on. So, I stepped out, I thought, you know, I've, I've had really enough of this stuff in my career, I don't, I want to avoid it. He came out, and he didn't target me or anything, because I didn't know him. And I said, Rena, I said, you know, I was over here as a probation officer in the late six sixty-nine, seventy. Do, do you have a relative that, you know, worked? I said, you're a commander. Do, do you have a relative that worked in the police department? He says, yeah, my dad. Chief Hughes, you remember that? Anyway, that'll conclude my report.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I did that picture, by the way. Had a very handsome, tall Hispanic man and a beautiful Hispanic, looked like a Hispanic woman, and they were carrying a baby. And Ray said, that's me. And I'm glad I was sitting down, you know? Anyway, that concludes my report. Unless there are questions, let them fly.
Appreciate it, Mr. Wellman. All right, that'll conclude the number sixteen city manager report. We'll move on to item number nine, Los Banos Urban Forest Management Plan, and we'll turn to Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Thanh.
Good evening, mayors, city council. Tonight, we have an exciting documents to talk about. I'll, I'll head, turn this over to Mr. Joe Heim, and he's going to be assisted with one of our consulting Planet Geo that's been working really hard in putting this plan together for the city. So, without further ado, Joe, and then Chris.
All right. Thank you very much. This plan has been a few years in the making, so it's an urban forest management plan. We were able to get funding for this development of this plan from a grant that we received from Cal Fire. So, this, this entire plan is reimbursable financially, so really awesome opportunity through Cal Fire to get that. This is the first urban forest management plan completed in the city of Los Banos. And as part of the plan, there's really two parts. There's the tree inventory, which really gave us data on the number of trees, the conditions, all that type of information, as well as then looking at the actual plan and setting a framework for the future. To complete this plan, we are working with a company called Planet Geo, and I've been working with Chris for a couple of years here, and he'll be doing a presentation tonight. You know, I really, really enjoyed working with Planet Geo and Chris and his team. Their team came out in March and February of last year, in 2021, to complete the tree inventory, did stakeholder interviews, community survey. We've done several presentations with the Tree Commission and Parks and Rec Commission. So, just a lot of data that has come out of this process, and just really want to thank him. He actually flew in from Pennsylvania today, had a flight delay, and really just thankful to have him here to present. Hand off to him. Thank you.
All right, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity, council and department managers and everyone. Just also wanted to thank, you know, Joe's participation and a participation throughout the project in order to get us the information we needed and to help to develop the strategies for this long-term plan. And also to Cal Fire for, like Joe said, to help fund this project, and the Community and Economic Development Department, as well as Public Works, who are instrumental to help guide and shape this plan for the long term. And so, I'll get into the presentation, but first wanted to also recognize my team of urban forestry consultants, and they were instrumental in analyzing all of the public tree data that was collected back in 2021. So, we went tree by tree, every single public tree along streets and medians and in maintained areas of parks, to understand the species, the condition, the size, and the maintenance needs. And we crunched that data along with some other processes that I'll discuss in order to have this strategic plan. So, this presentation will be brief. As Joe said, it was multiple-year project. There's a lot in the plan, and we distilled it down to about fifteen minutes. So, we want to have time for questions and to comment on the presentation and the project itself. But I'll talk a bit about the purpose of the project, and then get into some key highlights from our findings as we analyze the information, and then get into the core of the plan, this long-term forty-year plan for urban forest management. And then, we'll talk a little about the overarching vision and the goals for trees in the community. And it's a bit small on this screen, but I know this quote very well, and I'll paraphrase, and really, it's just speaking to the purpose of this project, in that urban forests and urban forest sustainability does not grow overnight. It requires a shared commitment from the city itself, as well as its partners and the community. In order to have this long-term vision for a plan, we had engagement throughout the process that I'll discuss. And when we talk about an urban forest, when I started in this career, you know, eyebrows would raise. It sounds confusing to folks, but it's really starting to gain traction as we talk about, you know, water issues, fires, pest and disease, climate change, human health and well-being, to understand that urban forests are trees in our communities. They're trees that are citywide across all landscapes, trees in open space and natural areas, along waterways, in the riparian corridors. There are the trees in our campus and institutional grounds, and then in our parks and our streetscape settings. So, with this plan, we focus on the public trees, those trees, you know, in parks and in the streetscapes, but the plan does touch on private trees through community engagement and education, as well as getting into what the tree ordinances entail and how that affects trees on private land. But the real key to this plan is the engagement and the education going forward to the public. And in any landscape, these trees are infrastructure to the city, like sidewalks and streets are managed, trees need to be properly managed because they're an asset providing benefits to the community. And when we talk about benefits, sometimes these are feel-good benefits, other times they're quantifiable. They're reducing surface temperatures and impacting the effects and mitigating the effects of climate change. They're improving water quality and air quality, and also increasing property values due to their aesthetic appeal and just their characteristics of creating that design of a streetscape and property. And the nice thing is that we have research to back these feel-good and these quantifiable benefits, and with that public tree inventory, we were able to find the overall benefits annually that these trees provide. And now, this is a subset of the entire urban forest. There are more trees than, you know, what we're inventoried, but around 12,600 trees were inventoried in 2021, and they equate to a $1.2 million value in terms of benefits and services. And just for reference, that's, that's through the iTree research from the U.S. Forest Service, where it looks at quantifying how much energy is saved from the shading of the canopy of trees, or capturing precipitation to slow the runoff or to allow it to filter through the soil, and other benefits like the carbon services of sequestering carbon, capturing it and storing it, and then reducing the greenhouse gas effects. And so, that data was instrumental to developing this plan, but there were other components to this project. We had the inventory that also included an inventory of planting spaces on public property. So, those planting spaces are potential viable spaces for canopy expansion. But the data was also tied in with the planning process, where we did a deep dive research into existing plans and studies to make sure that our strategies don't conflict with city policies and goals. We also sat down and met with city staff and Tree Commission members to talk through workflows, roles, you know, challenges, shared successes, and those priorities that will help shape the plan. We also did benchmarking research. We did an urban forest audit that went through 130 elements of urban forest management, where we ranked each one of those for the city based on our findings. And then, throughout that process, public engagement was woven into it at key intervals so that we could inform the strategies to develop the plan and the overarching vision. And so, now I'll just cover some highlights of, as we were starting to crunch the data during our analysis and planning, some things that really stood out, and we talk about, you know, what composition is the urban forest? So, that starts with our inventory data, understanding the species makeup of the urban forest, the public tree population. And what we found is that the primary public tree in population is Chinese pistash, and then followed with the narrowleaf ash, and then London plane trees. One thing I wanted to point out is that if you combine all ash trees together, that would be your raywoods, your green ash, your narrowleaf, you have 20% ash trees. When we talk about percentages, we start to talk about vulnerabilities and susceptibility to pest and disease and, you know, climate change. And if you have a high concentration of a certain species, you could potentially see, you know, impacts of canopy loss if a pest or something were to be introduced. So, this just gives us an idea of baseline conditions, and then we start to develop instrumental pieces to the plan to help shape the urban forest of tomorrow. So, in order to shape an urban forest of tomorrow, you have to have a solid foundation of tree ordinances that are strong but fair. And through this process, we went through the ordinances as well as the design standards to make sure that they align with industry best practices and standards, as well as the recommendations that we got from Cal Fire, the city staff input, the commission input, public input, and then from our data crunching. We redlined ordinance to make recommendations, and they can be gradual changes over time, but ways in, in order to effectively implement an urban forest management plan with the goal of sustainability. And then, this screenshot at the bottom, don't worry about that, but that's just to show the extent of the mass, the recommended master street tree list. So, we took the original list, analyzed the tree inventory, you know, what trees are working well currently, what trees could be phased in with changing climate, and then we started to draft that master list. And with that, we found 114 species, some of which stayed, you know, a lot of which stayed from the old list, but some we introduced in. We did what was called a sister climate city analysis, looking at what the city's climate will be 60 years from now. And then, we looked at the trees in those sister cities to see what might be able to be phased in as the temperatures and the climate change. So, that was a whole endeavor with feedback from city staff and commission to get to this list, where then it's an interactive list where we got really specific. It's a downtown planting with X amount of space, no irrigation, what trees work, you know, answering questions like that, that you're out in the field and need to make those decisions. But then, we took that a step further. You, we're looking down on the ground at the individual trees, but we want to take a top-down look as well at the entire urban forest. So, we do a tree canopy assessment, and that enables to look at trees across public and private land. And so, what we found is that 13.6 or 14% of the city is covered by the shade of the urban tree canopy. That equates to approximately 700 football fields of tree canopy in the city. What we found then, we also did a comparison from 2015 to 2021, and we found that actually the city increased in tree canopy by 2%, but we also found that impervious, you know, buildings, roads, parking lots, that increased by 3% in that time span. So, you know, that goes back to ordinances, making sure that you preserve the existing canopy you have, you know, aligned with smart development, but having goals in place to have a no net loss of canopy and to increase canopy going forward for those benefits that I talked about earlier. And so, we start to talk about what would more tree canopy, what would an expanding urban forest look like in the city? And we start to look at priority areas based on heat, socio-demographics, services that trees can provide, like heat reduction and, and water quality, air quality, those sorts of things. And then, we came up with a goal of 30% canopy in about 40 years. That's 875 trees per year. You know, there are some assumptions and mortality rates that we apply to that, but what we encourage is a 50-50 split, where the city plants trees and the public and its partners plant trees towards this goal of increasing canopy. The thing you have to keep in mind is the types of trees and the maintenance, and that's what the plan addresses, not only getting trees in the ground, but making sure they thrive. So, talking about thriving, what we did was a relative performance index of the species to understand what trees are performing well, and which ones may should maybe phase out of the population, because you've tried and tried, but they're just not surviving with, you know, the maintenance demand, the water, the changing climates, all sorts of things. Urban areas are harsh environments for trees to grow. They require, you know, proper maintenance. And so, what we found, one interesting thing about this slide is that, if you recall, narrowleaf ash and London plains were one of the top five tree species in the population, but they have an RPI, a performance index, lower than 1%, lower than one, which means they're performing in poorer, poorer condition than the overall population. So, that's a, you know, not a definite sign, but maybe, you know, something to monitor, that these trees aren't performing as well as other species in the urban forest. So, as we start to get this data together and start to analyze and, and really see what this means to the city, we sat down with city staff to get an understanding of their viewpoints, their workflows, roles, and their, their shared priorities. And so, just a couple of things to call out with this infographic is that, you know, there were several responses that spoke to challenges, which is often the case, resources in terms of staffing and funding, but also code enforcement and making sure that they preserve the canopy that's, you know, currently growing in the city. And what we found with the desired outcomes that they wanted of this management plan relates to those same types of priorities that they see in their workflows, staffing, resources, but then also, one that rose to the top was community engagement, which was a really good sign to see because it requires a shared commitment. And then, we also gathered feedback from the public through social media and website content and surveys and information sharing, and then commission meetings. And one thing that I wanted to call out with this slide is that we find that folks in the community want to plant more trees, they want to increase canopy drastically, but they understand that there is a funding and a maintenance requirement to that, but they want to see the canopy increase for the air quality, the carbon sequestration benefits, and the human health benefits of increasing tree canopy. So, the question was asked, if the program had more funding, where would you like to see that applied? And the top three were towards green jobs training. Then it went to, I know the third one was for planting, but the second one was response time to maintenance of public trees. And so, all of this information is leading to the overarching vision for the urban forest. And to paraphrase this, this vision statement for the, for the plan states that trees, they are recognized as being essential to life, as well as to the health of residents in the city, and it should continue to be a city priority, and that also, it requires partnerships in order to maximize the long-term benefits of trees. And this should all be guided by a management plan. And so, not to go into detail, but through this vision and through the strategy development, we identified six goals relating to policy, staffing, budget, assessments and plans, community, and then management. And then, each goal has strategic actions with an implementation plan to incrementally make changes, so not a complete overhaul or anything, but gradual improvements aligned with Cal Fire recommendations, aligned with the audit that we did, and the feedback that we got from city staff and from the public. And so, this just shows one example of the asset management goal and the strategic And so this just shows one example of the asset management goal and the strategic actions. And so it's more so of a visual, it's in the plan, but we have a summary of the actions following the goals in the plan. And then as an appendix, this work plan that walks you through step by step, the actions, the priority, the level of effort, the funding mechanism, the folks that would be involved, and then also the indicators for how you can monitor that plan's action over time. And that is two years of a project narrowed down to about 15 minutes. I just wanted to emphasize, you know, the participation from the city was really appreciated. These projects are long-term, you know, in the making, and then they're a long-term investment in the urban forest. And I really want to thank the city for participating and for engaging in this important effort. So thank you.
Do you want me to open it for questions? Is there any you want to put on the council? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. In the evaluation of the, the canopy that we have in, in Los Banos, are there some trees that you recommended to be taken off of our tree list? I mean, can you share with us some of the ones that you came across? And, and I noticed that there's this rate of survivability for some trees and some that aren't producing as well. And I understand that if you plant too much of the same species, that if there's an infestation of, you know, some sort of insect, it could just kind of wipe out things. But I, I know there was, what is it, the Modesto Ash, was it? Yeah, that was, you know, just ubiquitously planted, you know, everywhere in the valley here, and they have begun to cause problems over the years. Some people have taken them out of their yards. We still have some in our public right-of-way. And I noticed that in some of our commercial areas, there are a lot of pine trees that have been planted, and they drop needles that could, could be pretty hazardous as far as, in my opinion, fire. If somebody, you know, throws a cigarette or a ma, a match out the window, you know, up goes that particular area. So are, are there some trees, maybe like certain olive trees or the pine trees, the Modesto Ash that are being recommended to take off of our list?
I'd have to check the list to be sure, but just from recollection, I know that olive trees, there were some palm tree varieties there that were removed. I want to say hackberries, there was a, okay, there were some issues with it dropping, having droppings and just had.
And Joey, I have the list, so.
Yeah, eucalyptus. Modesto Ash, I believe, has been removed the last round there. Obviously, we still have those from 50, 60 years ago that have been planted in town, but I believe that's already been removed prior to this process.
So with that in mind, this is generally for our public planting. How do we get these recommendations to our community for residents to help them when they're landscaping or replanting trees in their area so that they're not planting the wrong species of a tree that can possibly cause a problem in our community?
Yeah, so I regularly have people call me and ask me, you know, what, what do you recommend? And a lot of times I do point them to that tree list. And with what Chris and his team has developed, it really, as he mentioned, it has that, that spreadsheet with, with columns where it really says spacing and, you know, planting size conditions, what, what you're looking for. So that's going to help quite a bit. Prior to that, it was really directing them off the species and then what we could find off of Google or other resources. So that's going to provide more specialized to Los Banos research, resources. In terms of other engagement, you know, in terms of development, they're going to be able to use that tree list off of community and economic development department's going to be able to use that as the planning process. And, you know, of course, we'll push those out during events like Arbor Day, things like that to the public.
Well, I certainly, and I think with one of the other items coming up on our agenda tonight and with this, you know, they, they kind of work together. I know I had received several calls in my district about, you know, hedges that had grown into trees and when they start cutting them back to serve the landscape as they were intended to, there were some people that were very upset because they saw it as coverage for their homes for shade, if I may say. But I also noticed that some of those trees had grown up so much that they began to choke out our, our landscape trees and they were dying. Ivies had kind of tangled up around the bark and they weren't surviving very well. So it's all going to work together, I, I think, once we have a good understanding. And I really appreciate your presentation tonight because it brings a different eye to look at what it takes for us to, to maintain the trees that we plant in our community and certainly the, the cooling of, of our environment here. And I've always believed in that. I always think of the example of when I used to ride a motorcycle and I passed by a, a field of crops, one that had been watered and one that hadn't. And there, and there was a difference temperature that I would feel coming at me on the road from the crops that had been watered. It was much cooler than the dry crops that hadn't been watered. So, you know, I can only imagine it would be the same thing for our canopy in our community as far as, you know, carbon monoxide and all the other things that are, they serve the purpose of taking care of forests and, and along with cooling. So thank you for your presentation. It was very well done.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Any more? Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Portem. Gentlemen, thank you very much for that very detailed, very well presented presentation. I think this is exactly what the city needs, long-term goals and the means and mechanism and plan in order to achieve those goals. I think this is going to be a great benefit to our city, beautification, add to the quality of life, add to our wildlife as well, because I'm sure some of these animals, they appreciate that canopy to build nests, et cetera. So again, it's, I just want to say thank you very much, and I can tell that you live, eat and breathe trees. So, because that presentation was spot on with no notes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I was just going, do you discuss this or they've already got with the tree commission also?
Yes, we presented, I believe, four times to the tree commission over the last couple of years.
Okay, so they're aware and they're going to be able to.
Yes. Yeah, we've reviewed the, the final draft with them.
I appreciate it. So if no one else has any more questions.
We, staff is recommending to, to move forward with approval for the plan. If not, we would ask for direction from, from city council.
Okay, we'll see where it goes. On item A, City Council Resolution Number 6576, adopting the Los Banos Urban Forest Management Plan. Do I have a motion or you have questions? Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Did you, did you like to make a motion?
Ms. Lewis is first. Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6576 as read by title.
Thank you. And the second, Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Lewis on Resolution Number 6576, second by Council Member Jones. All in favor? Aye. No opposed and pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. So we'll now move on to Item 12, Pioneer Road Project Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you again. So this is kind of, in the last couple of months, staff has been receiving quite a bit of public inquiry, both from residents as well as from city council in regard to this project. It is a very exciting project for the city. So we want to take this opportunity to bring a project update to you guys as well as give an opportunity for our consultant, Mark Thomas here, who's act as a project engineer coordinating between two other consultants, which you guys have awarded in the past, that is Monuments for Surveying for Right-of-Way Acquisitions as well as GPA, who is acting on RP HAS to do technical study and assist us, get us through the environmental study. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and introduce Mr. Ed Noriega. He is the project manager, senior project manager with Mark Thomas to go ahead and give us this update.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So, yeah, this presentation mainly a project status update on the Pioneer Road Widening Project, soon to be renamed Pioneer Road Complete Streets Project, and I'll provide a reason later. Okay, so as you may know, this project, the objective is really to provide a parallel path for local residents to Pacheco Boulevard in the southern portion of the city, shown there in the pink line. And it has a multi-use trail as part of that. And initially, it was a envisioned to be a four-lane facility with a multi-use trail, and it's evolving as we speak, actually. So a little bit of background. So in 2019, April 2019, you received a sustainability grant for transportation planning for the Pioneer Road Complete Streets Plan, and that was adopted in January 2021. May of 2019, 8.7 million roughly of Measure V West Regional Projects was allocated towards or programmed towards the Pioneer Road Widening Project. September of 2019, MCA G Board approved for Pioneer Road to be a priority project to receive subsequent regional funds. And the commitment date to this date, you started with 8.7 million roughly, the commitment to this date is now 25 million towards the Pioneer Road Widening Project. In February 2020, we began Phase One of Pioneer Road Widening Project, which is the conceptual design of the project in order to start lining up for more funds as we progress along the project. And in April 2022, you've completely scoped the Pioneer Road Phase Two portion of the project, which is the environmental documentation of the project. So this is, I guess, too many words, but now this graphic here shows where we are exactly in the process of project delivery. Still in the early stages of the project, however, we're marching our way towards Phase Four, which is construction in the near future. So in the project delivery process, the middle, this didn't quite turn out nicely, but the middle bullets in there, the environmental phase mainly goes over preliminary engineering, some technical studies for looking at the resources out there, Section 7 and Section 106 consultation, as well as preparing an environmental impact report, an environmental Technical studies include just cultural studies, so looking at what might be out there prior to us being here, also looking at biology, natural, environmental studies, delineating it, looking to see if there's any hazmat out there, looking at air quality, also studying noise, and also the impacts of the community, and perhaps also visual, how that might affect the visual nature out there. From preliminary engineering perspective, we started, we've already flown the project, prepared some topographic mapping, looked at right-of-way to know what the existing right-of-way is out there, started geotechnical engineering, and we've also started looking at the preliminary concept of developing a facility through there based on the mapping. One of the elements that we also looked at, and this is from your direction from roughly a year ago, about nine months ago, is to, let's look at traffic to really right-size this project, mainly because the, when we initially looked at the project for the initial documentation, a four-lane concept, it was roughly $56 million to $86 million, depending 56.5 million to $86 million would be the total cost of this project. You know, we're kind of escalating that. However, using traffic data, we can right-size it to really understand the right, the, the correct size of the project that fits the community. So this is, this map just here just shows roughly what that alignment looks like. It's roughly 6.5 miles from just east of Los Banos Creek on the left side of the screen there, runs south to Pioneer Road that goes east-west at the, the middle part of the bottom, middle part of the aerial there, then it curves around and connects to Ward Road as it reconnects to Pacheco Boulevard, State Route 152 in the middle portion of the screen there. The, with our preliminary traffic studies, and currently these are being reviewed by Caltrans, so not quite official yet, but it looks like only a two-lane facility is needed in the blue section shown there, with a four-lane facility needed in the yellow section there. And the yellow portion is mainly from Gusville Alta to Mercy Springs, so to State Route 165. So for the most part, yes, sir, did you have a question there?
I do, if I may, Mr. Portem. Given the importance of this causeway, if you will, or transportation corridor for the southern portion of the city, why wouldn't we build a, a four-lane section all the way through?
You could. You could. It's, it's the feasibility of, of building a four-lane facility now and getting it funded. So it, what we are doing is with the Complete Streets Plan effort, you've defined, the city has defined a four-lane corridor. We're not necessarily recommending, if this is, if this becomes official, which is likely, we're not recommending to shrink that corridor. It's still providing the width to be able to deliver a four-lane corridor in the future if you need be. When we look at traffic, we projected out 20 years. So it's a, a 2045 traffic model is what we're looking at. And based on the 2045 traffic model and what you've planned in the community, you only need a two-lane facility west of Gusville Alta and east of Mercy Springs.
I would personally have to be sold on that. The, the reason is this, we, we know that roads, if they're properly maintained, can last virtually forever. That's a long time, okay? But they, they reach a certain point, you know, due to deterioration where you have to totally reconstruct. And, and I would worry that, you know, maybe long after I'm gone, but that building a two-lane facility and then later having to add to it just doesn't make sense. I don't know how else to say it.
Yeah, I think the city manager woman, I think that is a very valid point. So what we are actually doing right now is, in the initial phase of the project, we are doing the environmental study based on the four-lane corridor. So this project will be four-lane ready. However, based on our data, because again, just like any other transportation project, we actually have to work with our partner, in this case, the county and Caltrans, which use a very sophisticated modeling data that have to go through. So what we did is we modeled to the best as far as we can, which is to the end of our general plan 2042, and that traffic data is showing that there is sufficient capacity with the two-lane corridor. However, we are still proceeding in the environmental to get it clear.
Yeah, I've, I've had a little experience in dealing with Caltrans over the years. And maybe I ought to leave it at that, but one might be the Applegate traffic snarl that Atwater experiences. We knew that was going to happen. We argued vociferously against that, and you saw where it got us.
And then another big component of this too, the reason why we, this project i- is billing or is being studied this, a certain way is that this project is likely to be built in phases anyway, just because currently all the funding that we have acquired has been from grants, Measure V, as well as federal grants. So that provide us, really to get us through to right-of-way acquisitions. Now.
That's not a criticism.
Yeah.
Oh, totally understood.
Yeah. And then as we proceed forward, so we continue to phase this project out, we will then have to take the conceptual, the phasing plan, then put it into our next study, but then having to collect additional funding from other developments going into place. So it is important that we continue with the four-lane study of the environmental, however, phase the project so that way it can immediately support our community.
I have another question from Mr. Jones here.
Yes, Neron kind of hit right on the head there. So we have the right-of-way, so future development, future traffic needs, we have the capacity and we can, you know, have the developers start pitching into. and we can, you know, have the developers start pitching into on expanding the roads as needed. So I, I think with the way that you guys are going about it, I think it's great because you'll be able to, we'll be able to start building this out soon, phase it in, and as our growth, or as the town grows, these developers can start paying their share of it, too, to expand that, that road to four lanes, and at least this way, we're not maintaining blacktop for, well, let's face it, every, every square foot of blacktop that we have is just maintenance needs, and if we're, have too many lanes, it's just going to cost too many, too much money over the years to maintain unless we actually have the traffic demand for it. So I like just doing it in phases like this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Sounds good. So, yeah, so at this point, the, the graphic that you see there is what the project would need over the next 20 years. Now, what we're also looking at are intersections. So there are, there are three intersections here that interact with Caltrans, and with Caltrans, anytime you have to look at an intersection and put controls in there, they require you to look at a, to explore whether to construct a roundabout or a traffic signal. And so at these intersections, the, we do have, one of the projects, one of the initial phases of the project to be constructed will be at Ortigalita and Pioneer Road, and that's going to be a signal. But at Caltrans, we'll be required to look at roundabouts, and so at these locations, what we'll eventually do is, we'll study these locations and make recommendations, depending what the city's appetited is, and whether roundabouts are a, a traffic control device that you may want to apply here at the city, or if a traffic signal is the appropriate application. But we will advise you on that and compare the two and move forward through this environmental process. So, project rebranding. So I think, I mentioned earlier, this project is, there, it's been called a number of names, but the main project right now, our contract actually says that we're working on the Pioneer Road Widening Project. And some recommendations from, and our discussions is MCAG, as well as just because of how California is in funding roadway widening projects, the recommendation is, well, let's rebrand this project to be a Pioneer Road Complete Streets Project, which the, the branding of it allows you to have easier access to funding, to, for construction funds. And I think that's a recommendation in how to move forward, and we're already having those discussions with some of the documentation as we move forward to actually start calling it the Pioneer Road Complete Streets Project, with the intent of really looking at the prize at the end of it, which is trying to get this project funded. Potential funding sources, so on the, there are a number of sources that can help fund this project for construction. You started off with Measure V funds, $8.65 million with Measure V funds, but since then, we've added a few, a number of funds, but it's always keeping in mind that these funding sources have, are available to compete for and continue to stack on top of the 25 million, sometimes every year, sometimes every other year. And so we're always in discussions with MCAG, as well as with Public Works, to make sure that we're, we stay in front of it and that, that the city gets, has the opportunity to continue to build off of the 25 million and eventually meet the funding needs for the project. So my last slide, some future actions of this project. So, the, once Caltrans reviews the traffic study, we look at it, we have some discussions on how to tweak it, there will be some roadway recommendations, more than likely, pretty close to what we shared here tonight. That's going to happen here over the next couple of months. Then, but the main things are, as we progress with the environmental document, it will be an environmental impact report that requires a notice of preparation meeting. That, that meeting is planned to occur in January of 2023. So we're, we're going to be working with Caltrans here shortly, making sure that we've got the database, the advertisement of the project, so that we can inform people of the preparation of the environmental document. So as we prepare the environmental document, that we're going to circulate that to the public in February of 2024, with the, the planned adoption of it will be later, or August of 2024, assuming that everything runs smoothly. So I think that's the end of my report, Niran. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll ask council if you have more questions. Mr. Alamos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Portem. Thank you very much for that, appreciate that very much. Currently, what funding has been secured for this project?
Oh, there's a, a number of funds. There's, so Measure V is basically the anchor. Then there's CMAC, has, we've congestion mitigation...
Can you speak to the amounts, dollar amounts that are secured?
So the 25 million, it's a hodgepodge of, of funds. I can't remember the precise numbers. We do have a table of what all those are, but there's a number of federal and state funds that have been cobbled up, mainly because of the commitment from the Measure V funds as seed money to enable for, for the city to be able to match the requirements for those funds.
All right, so no hard numbers right now?
We have them, I just can't, I don't, don't know.
Yeah, so I, I just have them pull up. So we have about $8 million again in Measure V. We have another $800,000 in the OTIF, which is the Regional Traffic Impact Fee Fund. We have secured the Highway Improvement Programs, which is the HIP, Cycle One, for another $660,000. We have the HIP Cycle Three for another $270,000. And then we have the LPP, which is a Local Partnership Program Fund, that is for another $600,000. That is Cycle Two, LPP Cycle Two, and then we have the LPP Cycle Three that is coming up, that is another $1.5 million. And then we have the Federal Earmark Fund, that is $500,000. And then we have the CMAC, a fund that is kind of earmarked for City of Los Banos, that's $5.4 million. And then the, the RTIP, which is another, I'm sorry, the RTIP is $5.4 and the CMAC is $1 million. There we go. That's all of that.
Okay. So we're far short of what we need.
Yeah, there's a shortage, however, the, like I mentioned earlier, that initial estimate was for a four-lane facility.
Correct.
And so now that, high, highly probable that it's going to be what you saw up there, and so the, I'm not going to say that it's cut in half, but it'll be much closer, we're much closer to the finish line than we were a year ago.
And so what's the new anticipated budget for this, or cost?
We don't know yet. So we're just, early in the process. I anticipate spring, we'll have better numbers of what that amount would be. And so the, as, as an engineer, when it comes to publicly stating a number, I'm a little bit careful about how to do that, because, you know, we want to make sure that, that number doesn't change on a monthly basis. So we want to hit milestones before we, we start generating numbers.
Understood. Thank you very much for that. The only comment I'd have is that, again, with the two versus the four, which is what was initially proposed to the public, and which would, which was then voted on, now it's been changed to, concern is that those two lanes are going to bear the traffic, and the traffic on that is going to reduce the lifespan of that two lanes. Whereas if we have four, we can spread load that traffic load onto a wider area, which then would potentially expand the lifespan of those lanes. Is that, does that make sense to you? Again, I'm just asking, as a layman?
Not necessarily. So the way, when the, you size roads based on a level of service, right? So the, you have a facility that, the way we, we size roads is a level of service 20 years from now. So the, basically, that level of service just means, how does a corridor operate? So when that initial, when the initial two lanes would be constructed, the first 10 years, there would be hardly any traffic. Then, the second half of the 10 years, as the, as more development comes in, then you'll reach that level of service to where, when you say level of service D at an intersection, for instance, that's a pretty comfortable intersection at the peak of traffic of that day. So the, it's sizing the use of the corridor for that, the peak amount of traffic for that one-hour period in the day. And so the rest of the day, for the, the other 22 hours, the, the, the traffic, the level of service is very low, where it's, it's actually a very comfortable, you, you hardly have to wait at all at intersections. So from that perspective, you want to size it correctly to where, as Mr. Jones mentioned, you're not necessarily maintaining four lanes, but you're maintaining the correct number of lanes for the use of it. Because if, if a lane doesn't get used, that what ends up happening is that it also deteriorates whether you load it or not. So it's mainly the sun, UV rays, and all that stuff. So the, the, it's sizing it correctly so that you get the most bang for your buck for your investment, instead of over-investing into something now, only to really get the use of it maybe 30 years later, so...
I understand, having a lane that's truly not being used, but still having to maintain it is a cost factor.
Councilmember Yamas, if I may, too, I think based on the original, the, the technical memo that was just completed by Fer and Peer, who is a traffic consultant that Mark Thomas has acquired, really, the bottleneck for the entire corridor is mainly established at those intersections. So when we are evaluating intersections, we're going to be sizing those turn lane accordingly, left turn, right turn, and make sure that the Q are accounted for. So once those intersections are sized properly, then the entire corridor will operate at a much better level of service. I think, based on the initial, initial data that we just received, most of the corridor will, all of the intersection will perform better than the minimum level of service we've already standardized. I think currently, the city standard at a level, so is D, all of the intersection that we are designing currently fall into level of service with C 20 years from now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lewis, you have a question?
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of questions. So the monies that we have now, the seed monies, are generally to hopefully get us through Phase Two, the environmental studies. Am I correct on that? Okay. So that's roughly around August 2024 that we're looking to hopefully adopt the Environmental Impact Report. So I'm assuming we don't have the money for the design phase right now?
No, there's...
Or is there some?
The, so the 25 million commitment, the, that actually gets you through right-of-way acquisition. Now, we're not under contract for design yet, so the, our contract right now is through environmental, the environmental phase, and as we get closer to the end of the environmental phase, the idea is to make sure, we're going to be, a year from now, I expect that there would be other funds to tack on to the 25 million, so that you can get closer to constructing phases of this project. I think what's going to happen is that the, the two phases in my mind, without data yet supporting it, but it just makes sense, that the alignment from, along the east of Creek, from Pacheco Boulevard to Pioneer Road is a, a, a good priority phase, then the extension of Pioneer Road from Mercy Springs to Ward is another priority phase that connects the system. Then, then the rest of the funds can then complete the system within, so that the, if we can get those two projects constructed, then some, then fill in the, the middle portion, I think that would be very useful for the city. So it, you don't need all of the funds upfront in order to get the system built, but being strategic about what parts, parts of the project to focus on.
So with that being said, are we within the scope of maintaining the monies that are being given to us by MCAG through this environmental phase study, the environmental review?
Yes, that's correct. So all of the funding obligation, we have already executed program supplemental agreements, and we have been invoicing them on a regular basis, and we are in contact with MCAG regularly, and that's like every couple of weeks, to make sure that even future funds are coming available, we are applying for those. For the most parts, you know, Ed and his teams, we have a, a funding director or business managers that actually assist us on every step of the way, to make sure that we're, don't let any of these funds lapse. And then one thing to point out, too, is that as we are completing the environmental phase, it will open up a lot more additional fund for us to acquire. One for sure is, you know, the ATP fund. A lot of time, it's wait for us to complete the environmental study first, and then we can apply for that fund. And I think right now, we have notified MCAG that we are likely to look into somewhere in the $10 million range out of the ATP.
Well, since they've made this a priority for the City of Los Banos, I certainly don't want us to lose any, any funding that they promised us, because they would love to redirect that money to the east side. So I, I really want to see it stay over here on the west side for Los Banos.
And that, those ATP funds are really, I think this project is a really good candidate, mainly because of the, the Class One Trail, or the multi-use trail that's planned on the north side of Pioneer Road, connecting, and it connects your trails in the city. So it's, it's a really good plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones?
Yes, on the environmental phase, is, is there anything that would actually change at a design phase that would come up in the environmental phase?
Yes.
That we can kind of predict?
So, the, one of, one of the elements would be for wetlands. So as they study, when they go out there and do biology, they look to see if wetlands are impacted, and sometimes when you have a, an online canal, it, it could trigger that it, it might have some wetland resources in there. And so what would happen is that we would have to look at options to avoid it. And so we weigh the options and how to avoid it, and if it's unavoidable, then we mitigate, we try to mitigate for it, and, but we just have to work through the process to make sure that if there is a resource that's being impacted, what can the project do to mitigate for that impact? Or avoid?
Is there any projects like this, where we start seeing the design phase stack on top of the environmental phase at the same time on, say, some of the obvious sections?
Yeah. The, it is at risk, so the, if, the best risk management tool, what happens is that if you study the corridor for environmental, you're supposed to officially select the preferred alternative at the end of it. So if you start designing, but halfway through, sometimes you have an idea of what the preferred alternative is, especially after you've gone to the public, a number of agencies have reviewed the environmental document and have commented on it, and now you're making adjustments, and you have a pretty good idea of what that alternative is, the preferred one. And so that's the time to take the risk of advancing design. But what you don't want to do is advance design now, prior to studying what resources are impacted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any more questions? If not, I'll ask Mr. Thanh, what direction are you?
Mayor Portem, if I just may, ask council to make a motion to receive the report, as well as provide direction for staff to rebrand the projects from Pioneer Widening Road Projects to a Pioneer Complete Street Project.
All right, so I'll ask for a motion to proceed with the Pioneer Complete. Ms. Lewis?
Yes. I didn't quite understand all that you said, but I'm going to make a recommendation based on our Public Works Director, Mr. Thanh, and what he just stated, to accept the report and move forward with staff's recommendation. And what?
They're saying to rebrand.
What was that?
To rebrand.
Yeah, the motion was to, to receive the report and provide the... and provide directions for the rebranding of the projects from the Pioneer Road Whiting Project to Pioneer Road Complete Street Project.
Understood. Is that, is that fine, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, thank you.
Do I have a second? Mr. Alamos?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Lewis and a second from Mr. Alamos. All in favor?
Aye.
No oppose? Mr. Neron, do you have your direction?
We'll now go to public hearing on item number 10. If you challenge the proposed actions as described herein, court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And the public hearing is to receive public comment and consideration of adoption of annexation of ordinance. And we'll turn to Community and Economic Development Director, Susan Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So I'm going to keep this item very brief because at the last city council meeting on October 19th, the city council held a duly noticed public hearing, received testimony and adopted Resolution Number 6569, approving and certifying the final environmental impact report and approving the Los Banos General Plan 2042. And at that meeting, the city council waived the first reading and introduced by title ordinance number 1201 to adopt the annexation ordinance. So tonight, staff is asking that the city council would waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 1201 to amend Title IX of Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code as it relates to annexations. I won't go through the details of the annexation ordinance like I did two weeks ago. But if the council at your pleasure would like me to discuss, I can do that. And I do want to note that the public hearing, the public comment period, that was closed at the last meeting, and staff is requesting that we not open the public hearing again tonight. And that's procedural, please.
Gotcha.
And that concludes my report.
All right, I'll check with council. Do they have any questions for the answer on the previous?
All right, then we'll move to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1201, adopting annexation ordinance and related amendments to Title IX, Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1201 as read by title.
Do, Ms. Lewis, a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jones and a second from Ms. Alamos, Ms. Lewis, to waive the second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
I, no oppose. The motion is passed. And now we'll go ahead and, we'll adopt the ordinance 1201, adopting annexation ordinance and related amendments to Title IX, Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code. And do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1201 as read by title.
And Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
All right, I got a motion from Councilmember Jones, second from Ms. Lewis, to adopt the ordinance number 1201. I'll ask for City Clerk, Ms. Melody, for a roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Longus?
Yes.
All right, motion is passed. So we'll move to the next item, item B, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the conditional use permit 2022-06 to allow the use of a Type 20 alcohol license for the off sale of beer and wine for convenience market to be located at the northeast corner of Ward Road and Pacheco Boulevard, APN 084-020-032. And we'll turn to Development Director, Ms. Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor Protem. So conditional use permit number 2022-06. Just a bit of background, on September 24th, 2022, the Planning Commission approved a tentative parcel map and a site plan review for this particular project. And at that date, they recommended approval of a conditional use permit for a Type 20 alcohol license. That's for beer and wine only, for off sale. The project does consist of the development of a 12-pump fuel station, a convenience market with a drive-through and a dog park. The proposal tonight before you is the request for a Type 20 off sale of beer and wine license. And this would only be for the convenience market. And this would be regulated by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage and Control, which is ABC. The project is located at the northeast corner of Pacheco Boulevard and Ward Road. It's highlighted for you in this aerial map. Now, the parcel that's highlighted for you in yellow, the total acreage consists of 12.92, so almost 13 acres. But the project is just a portion of that. The project is just 2.34 acres. So it's just really that frontage of the bottom of that triangle that really consists of the project with the fuel station, the convenience market, with the drive-through, and it has a quick serve restaurant with it. And it also includes the dog park. This is adjacent to the College Plaza, which is most commonly known as the Food for Last Shopping Center. And it, it does have some residential components around it. It's west of the Meadowlands subdivision. This is a depiction of the site plan. So it's taking that aerial and overlaying the site plan with it so you can see the geometry of what the 2.34 acres consists of. The fuel pump is on the fuel station, the 12 pumps. That's in the lighter gray box, and that's closer to the bottom of that triangle. And then the convenience market with the drive-through and the quick serve is up at the top in, in the blue. And then the dog park is over at the northeast corner of the project, and it's the area in green. It will be a privately maintained dog park, so it won't be the city maintaining this dog park. It won't be dedicated as a park to the city. But it'll be an amenity and a convenience to vehicles, to travelers visiting Los Banos to have the ability to stop, fuel up. There will be some EV charging as well there at this location and be able to have their dogs take a potty break and maybe exercise a little bit. So we, as a staff, were, were excited with this new concept as we see travelers through Highway 152 stopping at our parks, Pacheco Park being one of them, and, and, you know, just letting their dogs walk around. Or they're stopping at fuel stations and their dogs don't have places to go, use the facilities, or even walk around. So this provides a more safer environment for, for dogs. So according to SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15332 in that it is an infill development. It does meet the conditions and requirements, according to SEQA, for infill development in that it is no more than five acres. Then the use permit analysis, it was analyzed in accordance with the findings of the Los Banos Municipal Code as it relates to general use permit criteria. And then there's specific findings for alcohol sales. And then the issuing authority is ABC. This project is located within Census Track 23.02, which is the eastern, eastern half essentially of the city. And most of those uses are along 152. This is a depiction and exhibit of the floor plan security. The cameras, there's interior and exterior proposed cameras, and those are highlighted in red. Those are outlined in red of where those will be located. And then also the applicant has outlined where the alcohol displays will be, where the cooler will be. There is a condition of approval within this conditional use permit that requires the interior and exterior cameras to be, to the satisfaction of our police chief. So this is a 3D rendering of the elevations of the convenience market. It has the drive-through and has a quick serve restaurant. So I do want to bring focus though to the city council that tonight, the ask is for the conditional use permit. It's just for the use of the alcohol, the site plan review, which included the elevations, was already approved by the Planning Commission back in September. So this is a site photo of the, the northeast corner of Ward Road and Pacheco Boulevard, just to, to bring some bearings of where this project is located. So public comment, public hearing notices were published in the Merced Sunstar and mailed out to adjacent property owners on Friday, October 21st. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending the city council adopt Resolution 6577, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Article 19, Section 15332, and approving conditional use permit number 2022-06 to allow for the off sale of beer and wine at the northeast corner of Pacheco Boulevard and Ward Road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Before we go to open public hearing, I'll ask council if they have any questions. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Stacy, excuse me. I see that the Planning Commission had their hearing on the 14th of this year. How long have you been working with this applicant on this project?
Oh, it's been at least probably two years, if not more. Devin Teakin is here from Legacy Realty and Development, representing the applicant. We, we worked quite at length to see if we could square off that corner. It's at a, it, it, the geometry of it with that triangular piece at like that 45-degree angle isn't ideal. It wasn't ideal for the, for the applicant. And the city was trying to encourage the adjacent property owner to work with the applicant. It just, still hasn't come to fruition, but we're holding hope. You know, there's some hope that hopefully that will be able to square off that would make for a much better project in the future. There, this project actually has two components of it, and I won't go into great detail. But there is a healthcare component, which is a parcel that is adjacent to Pacheco Boulevard that has a dental and medical office within it. But that isn't the focus of the conditional use permit. That too was also approved that night by the Planning Commission. But it just shows you how long we've been working on this project as we were refining designs, going through elevations, working with Caltrans on circulation. A traffic study was prepared. There was an environmental document. So a very, it was a long process.
So somewhere between 2019, 2020?
It was definitely before COVID.
Yeah, okay. Are, are the, are these, on the photo, are these actual companies that are coming or just a sample of?
No, those are the actual brands. Those brands are actually with, operating within Fresno currently. So Day and Night is the convenience store, which Devin, if, if you, if you'd like to speak on, on the other uses. So the, there's a coffee shop that's what has the drive-through window. And then there's a quick serve restaurant right next to the convenience market.
So what I, what I can tell from this elevation, it's, it's not very clear, but it looks, I see the coffee shop, which is, you know, on the corner. And then it looks like the, the yellow and blue signs are for the convenience market.
Yes.
So it, it has two sides, two entrances to this.
No, it just has an entrance through the front, although you're looking at it from an angle. You're looking at it from the northeast corner. And if you look at the floor plan where the cameras are located, which is an exhibit, it's Attachment Two, number two. It shows how the two inter, how all three actually interrelate with each other, which they're all connected to each other.
Okay, and then the last one, I'm not sure what that logo is. Kind of looks like a chicken to me, but is, is it a chicken?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
Just to introduce myself, my name is Trevor Beal. I'm the CEO of Day and Night Markets and Rare Earth Coffee. And yes, so it is a quick service restaurant called Cali Chicks. Serves California-style fried chicken, french fries, sides, all of that. The Rare Earth Coffee Shop, as you mentioned and, and noticed, is the only use that will be using the drive-through. So customers will be able to enter the drive-through order and just for rare earth coffee items.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else with a question?
All right, then we'll, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And since, and then we'll move to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6577, approving the conditional use permit 2022-06 to allow for the off-site of beer and wine under a Type 20 alcohol license for Legacy Realty and Development located at the northeast corner of East Pacheco Boulevard and Ward Road, APN 084-020-032. And I got a motion from Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6577 as submitted.
Okay, do I have a second? Councilmember Alamos?
Mr. Alamos, second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jones and a second from Councilmember Alamos. All in favor?
Aye.
No no's? All right, the resolution has passed. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Elms. We'll now move to item number 11, Landscape Maintenance Services and Physical Impact Review. We'll turn to engineer, Mr. Thanh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So this is kind of the implementation phase of that, what we talked about in the landscapes. I know in the last couple of months, we've been working very hard in trying to renew and also acquire new procurements for our landscape services to replace our current contractor as his contract is coming into expiration. So I have, this is kind of a, really a multi-department functions. And Finance has been helping us significantly. We'll also work with Community Development as well as from our Parks and Rec divisions to put this in place. But before we can go into more detail on the actual Landscape Maintenance Service proposal itself, we do want to provide you a little bit more background of our current contract with our current contractors, the funding sources, as well as the impact of those new services to various funds within the city. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Joe Heinz to go more in detail with this.
Thank you, and good evening again, City Council. As, as Public Works Director Taun just mentioned, this presentation tonight is on the Landscape Maintenance Services contract, which is currently held by Ronnie's Inc. We just put out a RFP process this summer, and this presentation will be going through that. Myself, the Finance Director, as well as Public Works Director are available for questions. So I consider this presentation and then this topic of what we're talking about with this presentation to be vital to Parks and Rec, the both current operations, but as well as moving forward. As you know, these landscape services, that's what keeps the grass mowed. That's what keeps the parks looking good, looking usable, all that. So really, wanted to go through this presentation and provide as much in-depth information as possible. I'm going to be providing a lot of information. But when I began making this presentation, the way I approached it is simply the information that I would want to know if I was sitting in your seat. So I, I am going to be going through some of the history of the landscape maintenance contract, as well as the LLDs, the Lighting and Landscape Districts. So we'll get going here. So presentation summary, you can see we'll go through the contract overview and, and what the contract is, funding sources that go into it. We'll have a little in-depth conversation about the landscape and lighting districts, which are partially funding this contract. We had a 2022 RFP process this summer that we are currently in process with. We'll talk about the, the results from that, some of our future outlook with, with that process, as well as some of the assumptions and variables that we've had to make in terms of projecting our future outlook and the next steps. So getting into the history of it. During the 1990s, the city of Los Banos transitioned landscape services, which were previously provided by city staff to contracted services. The city last entered, last entered into an agreement with Ronnie's Inc., the current contractor. Um, the city, uh, last entered in, last entered into an agreement with Ronnie's Inc., the current contract holder, contract holder in twenty fourteen. Um, there's been several extensions since. Um, the benefits of contracted services really derive primarily from the cost savings. Uh, utilizing internal city staff generates increased expenses related to additional staff salaries, benefits, equipment purchases. Um, and associated services such as, uh, fleet, uh, staff and fleet, uh, um, associated costs in terms of maintaining that equipment. Um, providing landscape services in general helps to provide safe and usable assets in the community that are aesthetically pleasing. Um, this results in increased property values and a happier and healthier community. Uh, Ronnie's contract expires, uh, this year. Um, we have extended it to the end of this month, November thirtieth. Um, and we'll be looking for direction following this presentation in terms of next steps. So the current Landscape Maintenance Services contract can be split into two services. Landscape Maintenance and Irrigation Maintenance. Uh, Landscape Maintenance provide, includes providing mowing, shrub trimming, weed control, edging, blowing services. Um, and while park staff, our internal city staff is primarily handling, uh, items such as tree trimming, restroom cleanup, trash disposal, graffiti abatement. Playground and park amenity repairs and improvements, as well as building maintenance, um, on restrooms, community center, college greens, building, um, uh, facilities such as that. Um, our landscape services as part of this contract, um, are providing routine service to assigned locations. So improvements such as the installation of solar lighting or fencing, or the addition of plants or trees are paid for from separate line items within available budgets. Um, bi-weekly landscape service is assigned for all location except for Ag Sports Complex, Colorado Ballpark and Seventh Street Ballpark are sports fields. Um, these locations are assigned weekly services. Um, during the life of the contract, uh, the current contractor has regularly donated weekly mowing of all park locations. This is something that we wanted to, uh, make note of as we are going through this process with a new RFP. Irrigation maintenance is the other half of this contract. Irrigation maintenance services are provided on a weekly basis. The contractor shall operate, maintain, repair and control all irrigation, uh, uh, and, um, and ensure there's adequate water to achieve healthy growth. Um, repairs are to be made within twenty-four hours of notification. Uh, and the city pays for material expenses for, uh, irrigation repairs, um, in addition to those, um, expenses obligated by the contract's regular maintenance. So what that means is when you're having that repair, you still, will, the city still needs to pay for, um, the material on that irrigation cost. So if there needs to be a new valve put in, we're paying for that valve, but their maintenance is coming out and installing that as part of that. Our Landscape, uh, Maintenance Services contract provides services to locations within the Los Banos city boundary. Um, these include parks and planters. Um, parks include neighborhood parks, large green spaces, sports fields, and we have about forty-five park locations in town. Uh, if you count all of our green spaces such as like the Flagpole Park, um, areas like that. Um, planters include medians, rideaways, wall planters, trails and landscapes surrounding facilities such as city hall or the fire station. Um, there are over three hundred, there are over three hundred unique sections of planters identified within about a hundred and fifty planter IDs. Um, in, in town here, so quite a few, um, different locations of, of these, uh, planters. Um, and just, uh, as kind of a note with, with, uh, landscape as associated with this contract. For every square foot that is adopted by the city, such as new developments in, um, Sunrise Ranch or South Point, um, which are our new developments, there is an added cost. So every time, uh, the city is adding landscape, that's going to have an associated cost with this contract. There are two primary funding sources for this contract, um, the general fund and lighting and landscape districts. Uh, the general fund is the main operating fund for the city. Uh, non-district locations are funded by the general fund, and these include primarily older sections of the city, such as Big Page Park, Downtown Planters and Colorado Ballpark. Uh, new developments that are located outside of the districts, um, uh, impact the general fund. So for example, we developed the dog park a couple of years ago. Um, that was in a general fund location and is paid for out of the general fund. Um, the community center about ten years ago, as well as Henry Miller Plaza about fifteen years ago are other examples of that. Um, the lighting and landscape districts make up the majority of the new landscape, um, coming into the city. And they've, the line, lighting and landscape districts themselves, um, vary in age. Um, some of them range up to about thirty years in, in, uh, total age. Uh, and they are derived from the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two in the state of California. Um, we have eight, eighteen different districts in Los Banos. Um, we, there is no district eight. It goes from district one to district nineteen. Um, and they vary quite a bit in size. So for example, district eleven consists of about forty-two acres. Uh, while district fifteen consists of about point three one acres. Um, lighting and landscape districts provide funding for maintenance, repair and replacement of assets in a district. The Public Works Department utilizes this funding for this contract, Landscape Maintenance Services contract, in the line items for professional services, as well as landscape maintenance. However, parks maintenance is a separate line item and that's paid for, um, items such as those irrigation repairs, that material, um, park projects, solar lighting, fencing, things like that. Um, and general park enhancements and repairs, graffiti abatement, um, items like that. Um, there's also line items for fence maintenance, sign maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, light maintenance, storm drain maintenance and several other, uh, uh, line items. Um, and the districts also provide for capital expenses. Um, these include playground replacements, irrigation system upgrades or booster pump replacement, uh, shade structures, storm station improvements. Um, and other projects that exceed five thousand dollars in asset value. Uh, included in the annual LLD budget, uh, funding budgets are line items to provide for water and PG&E. So when we are adopting a park, we're paying for that water and PG&E out of those districts as well. We also have line items for chargeouts, which, uh, chargeout would be, um, we have two park staff that are paid sixty-five percent out of. The, um, lighting and landscape districts, so two of our, our nine total park division staff are paid sixty-five percent. So that's a chargeout that is incurred by, um, based out of percentage to each district. Um, an example of an ineligible, uh, expense would be street rehab. Um, streets are not included, however, items like sidewalk maintenance, street lighting, things like that are. Um, the LLDs are funded by assessment collection on parcels within the boundary of the district. These assessments vary by district and can vary within a district, uh, based on if the parcel is residential or commercial and when the parcel was accepted. The LLD, um, assessments can be increased in the amount of zero to ten percent in, in each year in all but two districts. District eleven and district twelve have a maximum increase of five percent annually. Possible assessment increases are based on an engineer's report, um, of the impact of the district and approved by city council annually. Uh, districts operate as individual budgets. Uh, each one of those district, eighteen districts operates, um, as its own budget. Um, with revenue surpluses, uh, resulting in funding reserves for those specific districts. Uh, funding reserves provide for future, uh, capital planning and alleviate possible reductions in future revenue, uh, and potentially for the expansion of services. Uh, districts that have expenditures that exceed revenues and a depleted reserve, uh, remain in deficit and require a loan from the general fund. Uh, the general fund can loan for non-capital purchases, purchases in the district with a repayment period of five years. Uh, historically, there have been double-digit, uh, districts in deficit, but presently, all but two districts have surplus reserves. District eleven and district nineteen are presently in deficit. Um, this is just a dim map of the districts. So those areas in white are your general fund and the, the different colors represent the different districts. Um, uh, and so you can see there's, there's certain districts that are continuing to expand. So that purple on that far right of the screen there, that's Meadowlands District. And as South Point went, came in above the high school there, north of the high school, that, um, became part of district eleven. Um, typically districts are incorporated based off of storm, uh, drain systems, but there are a number of different, um, uh. Parameters that, uh, are looked at when adding districts to, or adding new developments to districts. Uh, district seventeen is another district that is expanding quite a bit as that development comes in. Um, so looking at what we cut, what we put out as an RFP for this process. Um, the current contract, as mentioned, does expire in twenty twenty-two. Um, and a request proposals, RFP was released on August first, twenty twenty-two and opened on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The RFP includes a five-year contract with two one-year extension options. The RFP requests a monthly schedule and inspections to be provided to city staff. The RFP includes an outcome-based contract. Under an outcome-based contract, the contractor will be paid for work rated as meet standards by city representatives. The contractor will receive full payment during the first six months of the contract with the expectation that all landscape will be considered to meet standards following the six-month period. Um, similarly to the current contract, the RFP can be divided into two services, irrigation maintenance and landscape maintenance. The following are changes to the current contract. Um, the landscape maintenance portion includes weekly mowing, shrub trimming, edging, blowing, weed control of the park locations during high grow season. So from March to October, um, bi-weekly service would then be offered during low grow season. Um, sports fields, uh, including Colorado Ballpark, Olivera Park, Seventh Street Ballpark and Ag Sports Complex would receive weekly service year round. So Olivera Park would be added to that, um, sports field bunch. Uh, planner beds will receive bi-weekly maintenance service year round. Uh, turf will be, will be weed-free, reseeding or sod replacement shall be done on an as-needed basis, um, as identified by city representatives. Fertilizer will be applied to turf areas three times per year. Grade differentials will be eliminated on sports fields. Aeration will occur at minimum two times per year to non-basin spaces and four times per year to, to sports fields. And planner beds will be free of trash and debris. Dog park fecal matter shall be removed on a weekly basis. Dog park, um, will be overseeded with annual rye grass in the winter and reseeding shall occur periodically throughout the year on an as-needed basis. Um, no changes were made to the irrigation maintenance is, a maintenance side of it. It would still be a weekly service to all locations. Um, a tree care proposal was also included as an, as an alternate bid, um, option within this, this RFP process. Um, this option included tree trimming for approximately twenty-five hundred trees per year within a five-year cycle to encompass all, approximately twelve thousand five hundred city trees during the life of the contract. One of the three contract, one of the three submissions received did, um, provide an estimate for the tree care alternate proposal. Um, the estimated cost of service, uh, exceeds the reasonable funding, uh, for annual expenses. Um, over the course of the five-year contract, expenses would exceed eleven million dollars. Um, for this reason, it is recommended to reevaluate this as a standalone item as part of a future initiative, um, as directed by city council. Um, we could possibly look at targeting specific areas or, um, evaluating what, um, funding we may have available. Um, looking at, uh, some of the, uh, results from the RFP process from the submissions. Um, each organization provided overviews of their staffing, scheduling, maintenance yard location references, qualifications. Um, there is one local company and two, uh, located from the Bay Area. Um, qualifications are particularly important when looking, working alongside the public. Contractors are expected to interact with the public at, um, at different times, uh, and in landscape locations. And qualifications are important to ensure safety elements are, are addressed, such as traffic control, mechanical operation, reporting and chemical application. Um, the total fiscal impact by Landscape Maintenance Service by the Landscape Maintenance Services contract was anticipated to increase. Both due to the increased service request, uh, services requested, as well as the time that's passed since the last contract round. In twenty fourteen, uh, Ronnie's Inc. was awarded the contract and, and the time since has been awarded a single two-point-nine percent CPI, uh, Consumer Price Index increase. Um, the financial impact by the three proposals, uh, ranges from fifty-seven percent to ninety-nine percent to a hundred and fifty percent. Um, based off the current expenditures from the contract. Um, it's, uh, important to remember that, uh, the general fund and the eighteen districts are separate, uh, budgets. Um, with the contract impacting each of those, uh, budgets. Uh, the general fund is a shared fund, um, account that benefits, uh, public safety, parks and rec, um, and many other various, uh, services and capital projects in the city. Um, it's challenging to look at the general fund, the impact that the, has, um, that the impact this contract has on the general fund. Um, in its, in a sense of the total fund balance of the general fund, uh, just because of the size of the general fund. Um, the general fund can be used strategically in various different capacities. Um, and each individual impact, um, needs to be considered within that greater budget. Um, we will see, um, with the highest scoring, um, bid here, it would be a several hundred thousand dollar increase in the, in the general fund. Um, uh, but I'll spend primary portion of this, uh, presentation on the districts because there is less, uh, financial flexibility in the, in the lighting and landscape districts. Um, the lighting and landscape districts are smaller in scope and require built-out plans over the course of the next five fiscal years, um, in terms of capital improvements. Uh, the impact of, uh, uh, of the, of the, uh, contract does, uh, present, uh, substantial changes for the outlook of the districts. Looking at the, uh, highest propos, highest scoring, um, assessment increase for, um, uh, if you were to look at the, the highest scoring, um, submission that we received. And looking at the financial impact from that, um, running those numbers through the fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-eight. Um, the impact would, uh, have ten districts in deficit as opposed to the current two. Um, and a minus one-point-three million dollar total deficit. Again, the districts do operate as individual items, but just in terms of simplicity, um, looking at that total fund balance. Um, again, looking at those eighteen districts, ten of them would be in operating deficit. Um, uh, under the current contract conditions, which again, um, we do expect the current contract to increase regardless, just based off of the time that's passed since the, the last contract round. Um, if we were to maintain that, um, amount though, just, uh, for, uh, um, a baseline foundation to look at. We would be looking at, at the same time, um, a surplus of one-point-four million. Um, and, and continuing to have the two districts in deficit. Um, and an important item to look at for both of these, um, projections is that these projections are with maximum increases on the assessments for all districts during the life of that seven years. Um, until, um, through, through the end of twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-eight. And in the, in the history since twenty fourteen, we've had one, a single year where districts have been presently maxed. Um, have, have had maximum assessment increases. Um, again, all districts can be, uh, maxed to a ten percent increase on an annual basis, except for two, which district eleven and district twelve are a maximum of a five percent. Um, so looking again at this projection, uh, moving forward, this highest scoring submission, we would be looking at a minus one-point-three million dollar total deficit. Um, with maximum increases each year. So substantial, uh, um, change in, in the outlook of, of future, um, districts. Um, the two districts that would remain in, in deficit regardless are district eleven and district nineteen Meadowlands and Talbot. Um, each district has a different history causing, um, the deficit. Um, Talbot, uh, def, Talbot's deficit is, is much smaller and was primarily caused by delayed development of commercial and residential properties in the district. Um, these properties have been developed and the balance between revenues and expenditures are trending positively with small differences, um, between expenditures and, and revenues. Uh, district eleven has, uh, much more sizable deficit. Um, I, I'll let, uh, the finance director touch on, on, on that, um, once I wrap up with this presentation as well. Um, but this increase ha, um, has been, the five percent has really been a major, uh.
We got, we got a question.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the, um, in terms of district eleven's deficit, the five percent limit on the maximum assessment increase has been, uh, a, a hindrance in terms of, um, getting out of deficit. Um, one more item to consider as far as the districts go is that a lot of these districts are between twenty and thirty years old. And a lot of that infrastructure is now beginning to get to the point where, um, capital investment is needed to replace or repair those, uh, infrastructure elements within those districts. To expand on, um, the previous slide, um, have a few charts here that just show some impact of what this, um, the highest scoring submission would have. Um, you can see on that first diagram that, um, uh, there is a fund balance difference. So in that district one, for example, you currently have about a four-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-dollar, uh, fund reserve. Um, after the, the life of this contract, you would have about a twenty-four thousand dollar. And as you go down, you'll see those ten districts, um, with the most sizable being district elevens, which is about a one-point-two million doll, dollar total, um, deficit. Um, the second diagram there just shows the total impact that, um, the two line items for this contract have within each LLD district budget. So what this is representing is currently that contract has a twelve percent impact on district eleven, uh, district one. And it, after this, uh, increase, it would be a twenty-four percent impact, which affects, of course, those other line items within, um, that available budget in terms of, um, sidewalk maintenance, fence maintenance, those other items, capital, um, things like that. So the last, uh, here, a couple of slides here that I have, um, it's really important to go through variables and assumptions with this. There's so much that goes into projecting out, especially one year, let alone five, six, seven years of, of financial, um, projections. Um, so the first item that I want to touch on is assessment rates. Again, um, those are decided on an annual basis and they can be between zero and ten percent in all districts, except for those two districts that are limited to five. So that, that's something that changes every year. Um, we have not had, uh, the same, um, assessment increases, um, in back-to-back years since twenty fourteen. Um, then another variable would be future landscape areas or parks. This is going to increase, um, expenses. So when we develop Shaughnessy Village Park in district four, that's going to have, uh, an increased expense to that district for, uh, College Greens, uh, district there. Um, on the flip side, when there's development, of course, of parcel. On the flip side, when there's development, of course, of parcels, there is associated revenues with that. So as developments come in in South Point, North Point, these locations, you're going to see an increase of revenues. Capital projects, both foreseen and unforeseen, is another variable to consider. Again, you have aging infrastructure. You have projects such as shade sales, those sorts of projects that you may want to provide in the future. You have things like streetlight transitions, things like that, that need to be considered. Sidewalk maintenance in some districts with trees lifting sidewalks, things like that. Another item would be future water conservation. It's really hard to project what the state might require in the future, and there might need to be a transition in landscape in quite a few of the planters in terms of possibly transitioning away from turf in the future and just depending on what they might require of us in the future. And then the last item that I wanted to touch on was operational flexibility. So operational flexibility is, again, that ability to increase sidewalk maintenance as sidewalk maintenance might be needed. So right now, a lot of the line items for sidewalk maintenance, fence maintenance, those sorts of streetlights, a lot of those are $500 currently. So like a sidewalk maintenance, for example, in District 17, that could be $30,000 as you repair lips. And as you repair different sections of sidewalk, concrete work can add up really quickly. So understanding that, of course, as you have more funding, you have the ability to look at additional services within these districts. Chargeouts, we currently have chargeouts for two park staff at 65% of their rate. We could increase that in order to add tree care staff. We could increase that to provide for street staff that also provide quite a bit of help in the districts. So there's a lot of options that are available in the future in terms of operational flexibility. So in terms of our timeline and next steps, so obviously, we're reviewing the RFP process tonight. On November 30th, we currently have the expiration of the current contract. We will likely have to extend that regardless in terms of mobilization for any possible contractor to come on as we're under that 30- to 60-day time period. But in terms of the next steps, we'll either need to complete this current RFP process or create a new RFP with an altered scope. After that point, we'll need to approve and sign an agreement with the contractor, amend the budget to reflect it, so there's going to be changes to our budget one way or the other, and as well as set timeline for mobilization for that contractor to get started. What staff is recommending is to reevaluate this RFP and look at a reduced scope in terms of trying to make financial flexibility occur in the future for these districts in particular. The general fund obviously also would have an impact and looking at that. But we're here for a direction from city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I'll turn to council, see if anybody has a question. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, so if we build a new development, we get a new park, new landscaping and lighting district, and we want whoever the contractor is at that time, maintenance contractor, we would just do a separate charger line item for that, right?
So if it was an entirely different district, it would be a new budget for that district, so District 20 would most likely would it be. And that would just come in as a whole nother set of line items. So there would be the chargeouts, the fleet maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, things like that, that would all come into play.
It would have its own revenue source. So in essence, you have to look at these as their own little entities, right? So they have their tax dollars that come in, and then they have their corresponding expenditures. What ends up happening with these, because it's not just the maintenance side of things, but when you build a robust landscape and lighting district with lots of lights, lots of infrastructure, and a lot of things that need water, all of those get charged into those districts, that is responsible for that. So we have, all of our chargeouts are based upon metering and other things like that. So what ends up happening is, is these are all, in the engineer's report, predicated on all of these charges. So as more charge or more service gets put into these things, it stresses them out a little bit. Now, in one of the districts, was it 17?
Eleven.
Eleven, sorry. Eleven. There, I went back and I looked at the beginning of the landscaping and lighting district being charged. So what happened was is that there was probably an aggressive charge into that district before any of the assessments started taking place. So in that one district, and I'm going to come back to council in regards to a transfer that's going to be made there, it was strictly for operations. So usually, what ends up happening with the loans that the general fund gives is for capital purposes. And that's to get the thing started. So you can loan out just to get it going and build. But in this case, it was an operational, I think overly aggressive charge by former finance. Way former, like way old, old. So that will bring that one a little bit in line, but it still doesn't fix the problem of these things going into an operational deficit. Because as Joe's saying, there's capital that is a big pieces. And the whole purpose of building the reserves in each one of these districts is in order to build and to repair. So if you can't do that, what ends up happening is if these things do happen, we have to fix them because we're responsible for them. That is where you can get a loan in from the general fund, but the payback horizon's very short. And in some cases, the way these assessment districts, especially in 11, you only have a 5% increase. No matter how you max it, you're always going to probably have some supplemental funds that are going to have to be given by the general fund. So there's encroachment in this contract, there's definite encroachment of the general fund. And it looks like potentially between, no matter, there's going to be about a $500,000 encroachment on the existing fund, just looking at each fund and doing an audit of that and saying, okay, this really should go back into this. And that encroachment's fine. But going forward, over a five-year period, we're looking minimally at about a $1 million encroachment on the general fund.
Okay, so if we assess a new landscaping and lighting district that comes in the future, we can assess it out what the full Cadillac product would be for landscaping, right? Because it's hard to reassess.
So that depends on the formation of it. And a lot of these things get formed by the developer. So the developer is kind of the leading boat person because they own a majority of the things.
Setting like the initial rates?
Right. So they set the rates. So what happened is, is a lot of these developments that are going south and will go south is they were created for the purpose of not inundating the developer being, you know, having to pay these assessments upfront. So not in all, just in a couple of cases this happened. But what we're saying is, is not only is this a scenario where the cost of service and the level of service we have to start looking at, but you have to max these assessments every year just to make it work. So that's what you guys have to be prepared to do every year, is we're going to be maxing, 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 maxing 10%, 10% in most districts and 5% in a couple. So we went through this process, and now we're saying, look, we got to be transparent and say, look, this is what's going on. If you want this level of service, then you guys are going to have to be prepared to encroach the general fund. That's kind of where we're going with this.
And so I see like some services on there, like aeration. I don't know that we really did aeration across the board twice a year. I don't even know if we did it once a year. But with something like that, would be something you guys might trim back, being very selective on that?
Yeah, so that would be a very good example of one. We do have an aerator. We've been using it primarily on the ball fields to use that. But again, that whole list, I can go back to it. Is new services, things like fertilization, trash and debris pickup, turf bean weed-free, reseeding, things like that, grade differentials on sports fields.
And also be aware, and it was highlighted in his presentation, trees are totally different issue. So the maintenance of these trees in these areas, it's expensive. So we have to figure out the balance of service so that we can also address that in the future. Because that is going to have to be addressed somewhere.
That was another question. So the estimate for the trees was roughly about $800 a tree, and that would be the same as a...
Yeah, that was what we got through one proposal. But, you know, as we go through that, there's different maintenance requirements for certain trees. Some trees need to be removed and so, yeah.
Yeah, they're not all the same, so it's...
No, it's not all the same. But let's say you were to take that, you're looking at $2 to $2.5 million a year in just servicing, starting to service. So you get the entire city's tree inventory serviced in five years. So that's why we were like, wait a minute, let's pump the brakes and take more target approach to bring that to you guys at another date. So we wanted to at least pull this out and give you an apples-to-apples comparison. Now, granted, our current contract with that is as cheap as it's ever going to be. Because they came in and they've really been giving a pretty good bare-bones service, but there's been no CPI increase, except for that one year. So if you were to look at this from a CPI standpoint, you're probably looking at at least in just the basic service, probably about a 25% increase in the contract, maybe 25 to 30. So that's reasonable. And I think that if we get to maybe that level of service, we're still going to stress the districts out a little bit. But I think there might be some leeway in terms of having to take care of some of the old infrastructure in those districts. And that's really kind of what gave us pause to all of this, is that if we're maxing out these operationally, we're going to have to deal with the infrastructure replacement and repair through different means, meaning the general fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams got a quick question.
A quick question, Brent. You know, we look at the general fund and we talk about encroachment of a million or 2 million bucks. We know that the general fund, depending upon which city you're in, is, you know, in the neighborhood of 60% to 80% comprised of public protection, police, and fire.
Yeah.
Okay. This encroachment we're talking about here, what effect might it have on the city's ability to provide quality public protection?
So whenever you have any service that is not anticipated, there is some stress on the other levels of service. Granted, this is an annual encroachment. So we're over the life of the contract, you're... Well, no, it's over the five years, right? So you're looking at an encroachment of approximately $250 to $350 a year of encroachment in the general fund. So I would say that level of encroachment, depending on how we move forward with our budgetary process, especially for next year, it could, it could impact a position or two, you know, depending on how the inflationary pressures line up for our taxes. I mean, we've been doing a lot of work forecasting over the next two to three years to take into effect this. We changed our investment policy or how we utilize our assets to mitigate some of this, which it is. And I can explain that at a later date. But we still think that if we can make the level of service match what is available in the districts and limit the maybe one-time items to the general fund, that would have to be where we could loan money over a five-year period for the districts. It makes far more sense to me as a finance director. And so, but we wanted to give you guys those options. We're giving you all the information here. We have, you know, we have scored three potential people. And, you know, if you think that that is something that you can stomach, we can move forward with that. We just wanted to make sure that you had all the information.
Well, if I'm a homeowner, and I say, well, you guys downtown and these districts may cost me response time, either side, police or fire.
Yeah, I mean, again, there's also your deal... So the city is, it's a level of service across the board, right? So you have public safety, you have community service. Part of this is to keep the beautification of the city and to keep, you know, anything happening there. You know, you don't want sidewalks to be dilapidated because that would be bad. That's also a service. So really, it's just presenting the numbers and presenting the level of service that's currently and whether or not you can stomach the expense or reduce that level of service in order to...
Any chance down the line that you take categorical funds, grants or others, or even ARPA, and infuse them to take off part of this pressure or all of it?
Well, then, so like we're saying, we have other things that we're doing, other categorical funds, like for instance, the Urban Forest Initiative. Those are categorical and they're very good. And they dovetail in with what we're talking about here. So we're trying to take a measured approach, at least I am. But at the same time, it's up to you guys to figure out what level of service you want the people to have in regards to parks and in regards to lighting and landscaping that's done in these districts.
I'm good. Thank you. Just real quick. So with the districts, I think one thing that I just want to get across is that we have potential, we kind of have that crossroads right now where these districts depend on this contract, which is the biggest percentage use of it. These districts can each be self-sustaining and being able to provide for their own capital, their own improvements, and not encroaching on the general fund. As opposed to this contract will lead us down that path. And the recovery period, if we were to decide to stop that, say, in three, four years, is going to be challenging because of the maximum limits on those assessment rates. So that needs to be considered. It did take us quite a while to get from double-digit districts in deficit following the recession down to just two. So it's just something to consider as we go through this. I think that everybody in the whole city can probably agree to additional services in landscape, making things look better. Of course, that's, you know, of course, that's something that we all want. But I want to kind of stress that point that there's a lot of variables that play into this in terms of that, of the impact financially. And additionally, in terms of making landscape look nice, there are other considerations in addition to additional services. And those include capital improvements on things like irrigation systems. So we have quite a few irrigation systems that are galvanized, and pumps need to be replaced and just generally provide spotty service on turf. So it's something to consider along with this is that to get, you know, full landscape up to, say, you know, excellent condition, those need to be considered as well.
Okay, I got councilmember Lewis here.
Thank you. Okay, so basically, the presentation you've given us tonight is a summarization of the RFP that went out. And in the report, it indicated that there were two Bay Area companies that bid and one local. Is that going to come back to council, or how is that going to work with this?
Yeah, well, if you direct us to bring that back, that is one of the options, to bring the scoring back. If you want to proceed forward with completing this RFP process and have a contract, that will be brought back in the next meeting. The results, the results of the RFP process. But we wanted to educate the council as to what the RFP was, what it will entail, and what the cost of that is to the city and the districts.
And there are some good additions to this, like the outcome basis. That's a good addition to this new contract that's going out. But I would like to see who the contractors are and what the scoring was. Because I know that, you know, there's a certain percentage that you give to a local contractor in whatever you do. If we're buying trucks, if, you know, whatever we're doing. If it's somebody local in Los Batos, there's a certain percentage score that is additional to them over someone that's outside of our area. So I would like to at least hear a report back on that.
So the way we structured the RFP...
So the way we structured the RFP is, um, there's five different category that we scored them on. Pricing's now, because this one is not a professional services like a, an engineering and architectures, we include pricing as a weighted at 25% of the entire score. The rest of them are based on the, um, the experience, the qualification, what type of, um, of, of level of service have they provided to, um, nearby jurisdiction and municipality? So unfortunately, um, the local contractors did not score very well on those category and the pricings did not favor, um, of them also. So really what we are looking for now, that, the result that we are having right now is, is really based on the, the, the experience, the ability to come in and meet, um, these kind of new service that, that we have provided, like having a platform-based or cloud-based inspection services where we can hold accountability and oversight, um, as well as the staffing level, um, uh, and also specialized technicians and, and staffing to be able to come in and do these new services.
So I, I think this was more of, we were going to point out, uh, we, summarizing the RFP process, but, but mostly looking at the cost of this service and to see if, if you wanted to continue on with this process or if you wanted us to come back and re-initiate the RFP process for a lower cost of service in order to meet the requirements of those districts, so in essence, be financially independent from the general fund. So that, that, that's, that's kind of this, this information session. So, so the direction would be, do you want us to continue with this based upon this, that you guys are fine with that? Then we would come back with the scoring and then our recommendation of who we think.
Okay.
Um, or do you want us to re-initiate this and look at this and, and try to get the level of service and, and cost back down to where, where everything balances?
Well, you know, then we're right back where we started from, which in, in some cases, uh, there are some things that were subpar, things that I had concerns about.
Of, of course. Of course, that's, 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 that's exactly, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
So, but we...
I just didn't understand.
With the process to say, look, the cost of doing this is this, so that, that's, that's it. So it's entirely up to you guys to say, yeah, this, this is acceptable and, and we'll move forward.
Well, I, um, and one of the things that I saw in the contract is about the replacement of irrigation when, uh, irrigation breaks. Is there a reason why we're not moving towards drip irrigation rather than, uh, the pop-ups which have a tendency to, to be affected by breakage, whether it's just naturally or somebody kicks them over or whatever the case may be?
Unfortunately, the, you know, our, our entire green space is over 264 acre, majority of them are turf, um, so they will require some sort of aeration. I mean, we can kind of convert the old-style sprinkler to a rotor head to save a little bit more water, but ultimately these kind of turf will require some sort of, um, and a moderation. And the drip irrigation would only be applicable to like a drought tolerance on trees.
I, I'm thinking more of the planter beds and, and around the trees, you know, that it would save us water from having irrigation going out into the streets or just leaking because, um, the, the pop-ups that, you know, have not been noticed or, or they're watering things that aren't even there. They're, they're putting water on the ground and there's no plant life.
This is a basic service though, right?
Yes. So, yeah, um, so that is something that we want to do, especially in those planter beds. Uh, it's just very costly. Um, as you go through, you're, you're needing to do substantial renovations to that irrigation and that's something that's going to be beyond this, this contract. So that's where that operational flexibility in terms of these budgets come into play is having that extra money in parks maintenance, which is outside of, um, this contract. The park, again, that lands in professional services and landscape maintenance. Um, that parks maintenance line item can be used to, um, convert that and capital line items can be used to convert it at, at a rate over 5,000.
So is that something that the city could look at, uh, in the future for any future development of, of landscape, uh, rather than using pop-ups to do drip irrigation on, on trees and on, on planter beds?
Yeah, new developments now have, have gone to the unwillow standard, um, so they are, um, using drought tolerance landscapes, so they are using drip irrigations. Now, one thing that I'm glad you pointed out this topic too is that although we are increasing the level of service to maintain our park, that is still, there is a risk involved because a lot of our park has dilapidated irrigation systems. So as a contractor coming in, trying to bring this park to a higher level of service, there will be an increase in an initial capital cost to actually repair all these irrigation.
For the first six months.
For the first six months, yeah. I mean, just for, for instance, you know, we all drive by a particular park, that park has, you know, the oldest irrigation systems that really need a full of renovations.
Yeah. Okay. And, um, let's see, trying to see what I'm trying to say myself. Oh, um, when you were talking about the developer sets the rate for the LLDs when they're developing their area, I, I guess I'm not understanding why we don't have a say in that.
So each, each, within each district, there can be different assessment rates. Um, so it's referred to as A, B and C, or maybe it's just A and B, depending on, there might be districts that are just A, um, there's, there's only one assessment rate. Uh, and they can be varied on a number of different, um, uh, variables, commercial versus residential being one of them. Um, but in terms of, of setting that rate, um, it's really looking at, um, that is something that city staff does have, um, a, a chance to review in terms of the, um, initial, um, services and all of that, that's going to be coming from those developers. But in terms of that rate, the actual, um, say, could be a hundred dollars, could be $600 a year annually on your property tax with, as part of this assessment, that can be looked at with, by city staff. Um, and generally it's looked at on, on an annual basis as those get brought in with the engineer's report. And what, that what staff is going to be looking at with that is what that impact from that district is. Um, so, uh, we, you know, you don't want to be fraudulent and say, oh, it's, uh, it's going to be this crazy high impact either. You don't want to set it at a thousand dollars or something like that, that might, um, might not be reflective of that because auditors will come in and review that. Um, however, as long as you have that justification, then you can set it there. So for example, District 17, um, has a few different assessment rates that have come in. Um, they have an A, B and C rate. Um, and, uh, A is a rate that's, uh, been historically set higher. Um, and this was done quite a while ago, so I, I don't apologize, I don't quite know the history of it. Um, and as, uh, as that has come in higher, um, we'll apply assessment rates to B and C while maintaining A in order for B and C to kind of catch up over time. Um, and like, for example, District 19 just got some new units added and so it went from uh, just a, a single A assessment rate in that district to now there's an A and B. And what we did last year was look at how, what, what, it was an area by the racket club, um, the new, uh, I think it was 10 houses or something along those lines as a, a single planter. And we looked at what that impact would be and set that rate. However, again, um, as that is going to age, uh, that can be difficult to maintain, um, in terms of five or 10% increases. So for example, in the 5% increased districts, you have PG and water that might be exceeding that alone, let alone, you know, maybe some of your other, um, associated costs, uh, park maintenance items, things like that.
I just want to make sure, you know, I know some of the older districts, there's nothing we could do about it, those rates are already set. But to make sure that staff has input with these developers, whether it's commercial or residential, that the rate is keeping with the pace and that we're not being undercut, you know, because they're going to get their money back through the sale of the property.
Yeah. But a lot of these, these districts are, are, are old and we're saying is, is, is these got set back then.
Yeah, I realize that. I'm talking about going forward.
I, I would just...
I want to make sure that we're not undercutting ourselves and that we can't keep up with the pace of, um...
Yeah.
Providing services in those districts.
Um, dur- during my four years here, um, it's primarily been worked on out of the public works side of, of our department, um, but I can say that that's something that we've considered as we've gone and as something that all of us have advocated to make sure that it's an accurate number moving forward. It's just unfortunately, it's such a small percentage of the total ass- assessment parcels.
Well, and, and as Joe was saying, and, and I've seen this, is, is, is the health of these districts is, has improved dramatically. And I was here many years ago and they were all bad, real bad. And they, they've gotten to a point where, where we're starting to feel comfortable with these reserves and, and being able to be nimble in terms of, of, of capital outlay. And like you're saying, there's irrigation and other things that are getting older and this infrastructure is getting older. And the whole purpose of, of building these up and having any surplus is, is to be able to finance itself and, and fix itself. So he's done a great job.
Okay. And, um, let's see, I have one more.
If I may add, real quick, Councilmember Lewis too, on, on the districts, and I think the bottom line is that these districts are meant to be, um, the, the purpose of them is to be self-sustaining based on the, the level of service. However, as we were establishing them, they are established almost on a cost basis.
Right.
Where you have an initial cost of maintenance and it has to be a fair share of that cost of that maintenance.
Right.
But as it ages, you know, let's say for District, uh, 11s, on the older side of metal land, when you first established it, that was 200 something dollars per, per unit. But as that increase were capped up with that 5%, unfortunately, we just never able to catch up. On the newer side, like in South Point, when we are re-establishing or setting a new assessment for those, we are setting up at 650 to cover that initial cost and the maintenance of, of that, uh, initial assessment.
And, and my last thing is, you know, we have just recently approved, uh, hiring a landscape design company to work on an as-needed contract basis. I think, you know, as new landscaping, uh, comes in, uh, newer developments that happen, that the city can work with that architect to make sure that we're getting things that are reasonable, that are not high maintenance, uh, and therefore the cost savings will, will adjust accordingly and still have the beautification of our city as, as needed. And that's it. Thank you.
Real quick question. Uh, sorry to keep picking on you. Um, if, as you look at this, you've had a world of experience at...
Cities, other jurisdictions.
Um, is there another model out there that you have come across that, that is better than this and the risk that is attendant in, in the general fund absorbing, you know, what, what, what in, in a, in an economic downtime might be a catastrophic loss?
Let me, let me say this. The, the work that Joe's done to create health in these is, is commendable.
I, I agree.
In so, in, in some places, you see, um, you know, deficits and, and loans and stuff all over the place to make things work. And that's not the case here. We have a couple of districts that, that have the deficits. One was created early on with, with maybe some, you know, that, that really shouldn't be there. So I think the point of tonight is, is to say, look, we've, we've done, he's done a lot of work and Public Works has done a lot of work to, to put these in line. We don't want to stress them out to a point where, where we have no flexibility in, in each of these. So, so that, that, that was it. I, the, the service levels can still be there and we, we can work through, you know, fixing things as we go. But if, if, if the operation is just set at, at a level that's so high that you don't have any flexibility to change the irrigation or change the things that, that you're looking at, then the general fund has to pay for it. There's no, there's no free lunch with these, right? So, so i- it, you can't have one district loan another district. It, it's the, only the general fund can, can loan the money or, or supplement those, those funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, the number one gripe that I get from residents is a lot of times, like currently right now in a lot of the parks, we either do bi-weekly mowing or we do mulching and we're left with, uh, big grass piles that gets all over the kids when they're playing and all that. I'd like to make sure that, that we can find an alternative for doing that so the parks are clean during the summer.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that if we were to look at a new scope for an RFP, like a new process, um, you know, there's certain things that we could identify that may be something that we could include such as weekly mowing, especially if it's during low, uh, the high growth season, um, uh, ballparks, things like that. Um, you know, that's going to come down to some of the priorities that, that city council sets in terms of, of what, which you're looking for. I think ultimately we're just, um, wanting to caution about, um, setting up the districts to be dependent on, um, outside funding, AKA the general fund. Um, so I, I think, you know, it's not to say that there's zero room for alterations to the current, um, contract. I think we just want to be as strategic as we possibly can in terms of, of what we're adding and how much that might, the associated cost that might come with that. Um, and then I just wanted to add in that, um, uh, our public works team is, is, has helped out with the districts like crazy, uh, long before I ever started. Finance has been there, um, setting these districts up, so I just want to make that clear. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Lewis, you have one?
Yeah, just one last thing, adding on to Councilmember Jones, and, and certainly, you know, this is something staff could consider, work out or what have you, but, um, I know the, the linear park, uh, the flyover, uh, is used by, you know, people who are training kids for soccer, all, all different kinds of things, people walk their dogs. I've even been over there a couple of times. But we do have some bog areas there that need to be filled in. I, I don't know how you do it, if you do it with mulch, uh, dirt or sand or what to raise it up because, uh, when the watering happens, um, you just kind of sink in there and it's just muddy all the time. That, that, that just seems to be a, I, I don't know that's an ongoing thing, but just a, a project that could be cleaned up.
Yeah, so that would be an example of like a targeted project that we would do outside of this contract and again, why we want to make sure we have flexibility and, and yeah, it's something that we could resolve.
And I'm sure there, there are probably some other parks.
Yeah.
Large areas in town that, that could use that service too. Okay, thank you. It was...
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Merle Protip. Um, you got a good report. I guess my biggest concern is the impact of the individual right here, you know, uh, as we're going into an economic downturn, uh, prices of goods, services, foods, uh, just astronomical. We've got a lot of folks on, uh, dependent on, uh, social services to just make ends meet. Um, I just, uh, concerned that, uh, this is going to take some of them, you know, too far, uh, that this, this impact is just going to be too much for them. We have a lot of folks that are retirees, on fixed incomes, et cetera. Uh, has that been taken in consideration? Is that something that...
I, I think that's one of staff's biggest considerations with this is, again, our projection is with maximum assessment increases, so in, that 10% increase to most of those districts every single year. Um, and, um, just looking at that impact year after year again, um, since 2014, we've only maxed all the districts once, um, and this would be something that we would need to project, uh, uh, max out each year for the next seven years. And so it would certainly have a major, um, impact on, um, property owners in town. Um, it's not to say that there wouldn't still be increases to the districts. Of course, water, PG&E, different projects, capital projects, um, uh, do require, um, CPI increases over time, um, but I think the city would be committing itself to, um, uh, maxing those assessments out, um, and at the end of the day, you would still be dependent with the result.
Okay. Um, yeah, well, I just hope that, uh, if we, council goes through with this recommendation to continue with this and report back with the scoring, that, uh, that we actually get the services that the right peers are going to be increased on. Example, that, like Councilman Jones, the, the grass clippings are left because that also affects the runoff into our, our sewer system, clogs those things up, creates more maintenance issues. So again, it's not just the, the aesthetics and, and the, the, the problem of it on, uh, people's clothes, but it affects the city in other ways as well.
Yeah.
So again, um, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Merle Protip.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. So now we, uh, we'll look to ask for what's your recommendation. I have here, what, with the RFP move forward and then at a given time...
On staff's end, uh, I would, I would recommend, uh, that we, uh, reevaluate this RFP process, um, reevaluate the scope and, um, release a, a new process to, to go through that might, um, uh, provide a better financial outlook. However, um, staff is primarily looking for direction from city council.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Jones?
I agree to bring it back and let staff kind of fine tune it to see what's necessary, what's not, because even with our own residential properties, we have to make decisions on what we go forward with and not, maybe we don't trim our one tree every year, maybe it's every two years or something like that, just as an example. So it's, it's hard to have the Cadillac budget, uh, or Cadillac product on a shoestring budget, so I, I think we... So I, I think we need to be very cautious. I think we can always maybe add to it in the future, but, uh, it's, it's harder to take away, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, everyone else agree?
I recommend, uh, reevaluate.
Ms. Lewis, you're okay with bringing, uh, reevaluating and bringing it back? Do we need a motion for this?
So, let, so to be clear, what, what, what staff's recommending is, is we either go forward with this RFP or we re-initiate the RFP process with a lower scope.
So we initiate the RFP with a lower scope?
That's, that's why we're using.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll.
We get this straight. Um, we'll come back here so the council can approve the revised scope?
We, we would structure the scopes to where, um, there is an essential, uh, services and then there's add-on services because currently everything is lumped together into one increased level of service. So we would actually cancel the current RFP process, take it back out with a different breakout in pricing.
Okay. On, on the basic stuff? Okay.
It plus the add-on if you want to, uh, abort the add-on.
Is that okay?
Corey, Mr. Jones?
Would the basic be what we're currently getting? Would that be the basic or would it be a new basic?
Yeah.
New baseline?
It'd be the current, uh, maybe adding on the, uh, the oversight as in the inspections and stuff like that to, to have accountability from the contractors.
Okay. Perfect. Just so we can see where we're starting from.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So basically we need to send out the RFP back?
It's a motion to staff to re-initiate the RFP process, uh, to bring the districts and keeping them into balance by adjusting the scope of the services. That's what I heard.
Okay. So we'll make a, have a motion to re-initiate, uh, the RFP, uh, with the, with the scopes that we've, uh, set forth with, uh, Mr. Thanh. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Oh, mine was still on.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to bring back the RFP, uh, to, can I say I stated as City Attorney Bill Vaughn? Is that easiest? It'd be nice if we actually had a cheat sheet on it.
With a basic and oversight?
What's that?
With the basics and oversight?
For basics and oversight, uh, to bring it back in line with our, our, uh, current, uh, landscape and lighting budgets? Close enough? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So do I have a second? Mr. Alamos?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilmember Jones and a second from Mr. Alamos. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. Mr. Thanh, you have your direction.
Thank you and good evening.
Thanks, Joe. All right. Next we'll move to item 13, Axport Complex Restroom Concession Building Project Update. We'll turn to engineer, Mr. Thanh again.
Hey, Mr. Council. I apologize for a lot of public work item tonight, uh, but this is, um, in response to, um, uh, the motion that was made from last meeting to bring back, um, the projects to go over the scope as well as to provide some visuals, uh, reference to what was approved last, uh, meeting for the Axport Complex Restroom Concession Building. Okay? So just a little background, just to provide a little bit more context, um, and visuals for the project. This restroom's, uh, concession building is located at the Axport Complex, which is on the north side of town. Just before we get to Henry Miller, uh, the park address is 700 North Mercy Spring Road. Um, currently this park occupied about 9.5 acres of developed land. That's include two softball fields, a parking lot, a dog park, a concession buildings and a playground. Um, so staff has included a picture of the existing or the current, um, uh, building. As you can see, it is very unique in shapes. It is two-story. However, unfortunately it was wood constructions and, um, it, it, over the year it has been significantly deteriorated so that the second floor was not, no longer accessible. Okay? So that's why, um, the project's goal for this is to replace this building, also make all the necessary improvements for foundation and the, uh, the ADA compliant around the actual building itself. Currently, the existing building occupy approximately 1,100 square feet or so. It's include, um, male and female restrooms. It include a space for storage. Um, however, the actual concessions work of the building itself is not really functional. And again, the second story of that building is not accessible for, uh, safety reason. Secondly, on the east side of that building, so you probably seen in the big door, window up top, it used to have a little ramp that comes down, uh, off of it. The ramp is no longer there, however, the piers and the columns is still remain. Um, unfortunately, um, we would like to request for this to be removed as it is posing a little bit of a risk for our younger, uh, uh, kid around the area. So with that, the new, uh, concession building is, is shown here. It has the same functionality as the old one. However, it is proposed to be constructed with, um, prefabbed concrete, both the, uh, side wall as well as the roof for lower maintenance. The building itself is kind of divided on the right-hand side there. I kind of put a little bit different colors, so it still remains. So the green section there is a, um, women restroom. Again, we are doing an ADA upgrades to the facility. So it included one ADA accessible stall, uh, one regular, uh, water closet, a sink and an accessible door. On the south side of that, the orange, um, area is the men restroom. Again, it has an ADA accessible water closets, a urinal and a sink. And then on both side of the building, you will see there is a water fountain as it is a sport facility and in many time, a lot of our, uh, use required that. Um, we have a pretty big storage areas. There's a lot of the sport field and our staff put a lot of our, uh, required this bigger storage. And then on the north side, the red, uh, rectangle, that is the actual concession building itself. So it has a sink, it has all the proper hookup, um, for a proper concession stand. And it is that, that room will be temperature controlled. Um, here's a little elevation view of that. I tried to put it in color, but unfortunately, as an engineer, uh, most architect would say don't do any architectural design. So I've pinned that color on there. Um, but it is, uh, on the outside building, it'd be very similar to what you've seen at, uh, Skylark Park. So it'd have, it, although it is a prefab concrete, it will have a texture that looks almost like a, uh, masonry wall. And on the, the roof side, again, it is still a prefab concrete roof, but it will have textures that looks like the, uh, the seal, uh, the roof slap, um, for this building. And that's essentially concluded the, um, the project scope.
Thank you, Mr. Thanh. And there's no, uh, information item only. So now we move to item 14, Councilmember Request Regarding the Homeless Encampment. And we're going to be starting with Ms. Lewis. I think it's kind of word.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I want to start off by saying I really wish some of the people who, the residents who come, uh, to our meetings would stay to, to the, to the end tonight to at least hear, um, what I have to say. Um, I know that the city moved this encampment away some time ago, cleared it out and we brought it back. Um, and with good intentions, uh, you know, to put up the fencing and all, um, it, it appeared to be a good idea on the surface. But my concern for, for the community who lives there is the consistent bombardment of the homeless encampment that's there. Um, the, the people who live in that encampment, I would say in general are not people, the, the people that would go to, um, a residential type facility to live in. And if I offend some people by saying that, I'm sorry, but I just have to call it for what it is. Um, they are a portion of our mental, uh, mental health community who are not on medications. Uh, the way our law is constructed now, they're not required to see a psychiatrist on a regular basis. Um, case management services is minimal, very minimal at best. Um, and a lot of the services have been put on the backs of the city of Los Banos and any volunteers who are willing to go into the encampment to help out. And it, and it really disturbs me when I, when I hear these people pleading to us and nothing is happening. I, I know that the, the chief, uh, brought us some information here a couple of meetings ago about grants that we're entitled to receive to possibly purchase a hotel or motel, I should say, or whether or not we're going to, uh, do some other process to, um, house, uh, homeless people. And we had a gentleman speak to us tonight about one type of project that Merced is using. Uh, and I remember staff indicating that, you know, the possibility of purchasing a hotel, that's already kind of, a motel, I should say, that's already kind of set up, uh, and just have to do some improvements might be less costly to the city to do that rather than to do something from the ground up. So we have people who will fit into that type of housing. And certainly there would have to be some very strict guidelines to make sure that they're continuing to live in a manner in which they can be maintained. Um, but we also have the other half of the community who are living outside who won't go in and they're inundating one portion of our community. And I have a real concern, um, that these people feel that they're not being heard. We, we didn't go through a process whereby, you know, we had some planning with people in the community from these residents, from council, with staff as to how we were going to go about to make an encampment somewhere and make it work for whatever period of time we needed to do. This was a piece of property that the city owned and, and it was convenient at that time. But there are children, I understand from the complaints, that live in the, uh, the trailer park. And then we do have Gilbert Gonzalez where there are a lot of children that live there. And the possibility of some harm coming to these, uh, families or their children, I don't know what the percentage is. I, I haven't heard anything now and, and I'm very thankful that nothing has happened to any of the children at this point. We, we weren't able to move the encampment further east because it would have been too close to Gilbert Gonzalez. So I, I'm just making a plea to this council that we've got to find some other alternative because the fires aren't going to cease. We, we can't have somebody out there 24/7. You know, what, what are we going to do to relieve the residents who feel that we don't care about them? And so, you know, the lady that came and spoke at the lectern tonight said that someone from the city, you know, tried to tell her something that sounded more threatening than encouraging. I don't know who that is. At this point, it doesn't really matter. But we have residents who feel hopeless. They pay taxes like the rest of us do up here and they don't feel like they're getting any relief. So I'm, I'm making a plea to this council that we come up with something, you know, pretty quickly because by the time we get the money to do building or convert a motel, that's for a different element of homeless people where, that can live there. But the element of homeless people that are living in these encampments outdoors, for the most part, there are some that are there because there's no place for them to go indoors. But for the ones that are seriously mentally ill, the, the treatment that's needed for them is not available in this county or just about any other county in California anymore. So we've, we've got to find something that's going to be more accommodating to the residents of our community and not just put it in one space and have them terrorized day in and day out, feeling scared, not getting rest, having their property stolen. Um, you know, there were complaints of residents having to go to the hospital due, due to respiratory issues because of the, the fires that are being burned. They've torn down the fence that a private resident put up, uh, that was right behind, uh, Home Depot. There, there's just this continual damage because they don't ha, you know, they don't have the reasonable understanding of what they're doing. It's just that I've got to get to point A or point B and I'll tear through this to get there. It's, it's not the concern about the damage that they do to someone else's property or to city property. They just do it. So, um, that's kind of my plea tonight is what are we going to do to relieve the residents of the problems that they've come here probably for a good four or five months now complaining to us about what's going on there? And I, you know, I've driven, I've, I've gone over to the, um, trailer park. I didn't talk to anybody. I just went there, parked, set my car to see what I could see that was going on. And, um, you know, it, it's not as large as it is in major cities, but it is a problem. And it's a problem when you have to live there and encounter what they encounter. At least this is what they tell us when they come here. So my heart go, you know, goes out to them as residents of our city. It goes out to the people who are mentally ill because they can't get the treatment that they're entitled to. California doesn't want to pay that kind of money. They prefer to just see them rot away in the streets and that's unfortunate. But, um, there's, there's got to be some relief to these residents who live in that trailer park. Because I, I, I would assume that while the project room key in the hotel was operating that they, I didn't hear them complain about that, but they were surrounded on both sides by the encampment and the project room key. And if that hadn't worked out, that could have been a real disaster for us as a city to have, you know, two situations where we were housing people and, you know, there's a community sandwiched in between them. But fortunately, for the most part, project home key worked out, uh, room key worked out and, and, um, the residents apparently seemed to be reasonable because we didn't get complaints from them about project room key. So that, that's, that's my position tonight. Uh, I don't have a solution. I think we all as a council need to work together to come up with a solution and have staff work, work with us so that we can relieve these people of the problems that exist. Cause winter, winter's setting in now. Um, you know, how are we going to control the, the burning of fires? If they're out there with propane tanks and they're blowing up, I, you know, I don't know how that could possibly, it, could it possibly be that a propane tank could, you know, fly over something or it's too close to the wall where they live and, you know, break through a wall? I don't know how that stuff works. I just know that, you know, propane is under pressure and possibly dangerous things can happen. So we, we need, we need to figure out a way to help these residents and not discourage them anymore. And, and that's my plea to the council and to our staff.
Anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Alamos?
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, it's, it's really distressing. I mean, I, it's, uh, very concerning to have these folks come back over and over again and they're not having any relief. There were several city properties that were identified during a report to the council. Those are alternatives. Those are possible alternatives. And I'd like to see if staff can give us two, one, two, three recommendations as to a possible relocation of the current, uh, enclosure. Uh, because that was the intent of that report was to give us alternatives, but we didn't, we didn't, uh, we didn't provide, or we weren't given a recommendation as to which one of those several or numerous, uh, city properties would be best or, uh, as the best possible solutions to move these encampment, or this encampment. Because right now we need to provide these residents with relief. Uh, they've asked for it. They deserve it. Um, and we haven't moved forward enough with this. Again, we had that recommendation of the several properties. Now I think we need to refine that and to identify of those properties, which one is the best or which two are the best for us to, uh, take action on. And if none of them, then, then, uh, And if none of them, then so state so that we know that these are not viable options. But we were just left with a lot of recommendations or identification of the properties, but nothing for us to take action on. So, I think we need to finalize that report to identify which of those properties is viable to move this encampment. I will also say that, you know, our police department has done a fantastic job going out there, responding with limited resources, limited manpower, to try to address these things. So, I'm not in any way saying that we're not responding, but we just don't have the manpower to continue to respond to these issues. And as these residents continue to live in this mental anguish, that's really taking a toll on the psyche of these residents. And that's dangerous. It's really dangerous to not be able to sleep, not be able to rest, not be able to have peace of mind when we're at work, wondering whether your family is safe, whether your children are safe, et cetera. So, again, so it's not just the noise, it's the long-term health effects, mental health effects it's having on the residents there. So, again, we've got to act, even if this is a temporary, while we work on the more permanent solution, whether that be a motel or the Tiny Homes project, which, again, we have other municipalities where we can go and see the effects of that, those kinds of projects, to whether or not they are, would work, and learn from them so that when, if we decide in that course, we have a starting point. And we have other areas where we can, again, study what they did, how it worked out for them. But again, I think we need to move quickly on this. And the sooner the better. Thank you, Mr. Lamas.
Thank you, Mr. Lamas. Ms. Lewis, you have it?
Yeah, and I just wanted to follow up with what Councilman Yama said. And I do wanna commend our police department for the extraordinary job that they've been doing to try to keep this under control. But they, you know, their duties are multiplied far beyond this. And a lot of staff time from our police department, and especially our code enforcement department has been put into this project. And so, they need to be able to get back, you know, to the duties of the things that they do on a regular basis. And I'm not saying that they don't, they still won't have to go out there, but it is, it's been a lot of staff time. And our chief of police has put in a lot of time for several years trying to work on homelessness and, you know, grant monies and programs that are out there. And, you know, I still, you know, hope that the county has some input into this and, you know, being able to, not only financially, but, you know, give some help to us directionally going forward. It almost feels like we're left out there by ourselves. If I had to guess, I would say that some other larger counties in the Bay Area would not do this to their cities to just leave them out there on their own, that there would be some assistance coming from the county. But that doesn't seem to be the case for us. So, we're kind of abandoned here and have to figure this out on our own. But I do wanna add that I think our police department and other staff that have worked on this, these projects for homelessness, have done a remarkable job. We've just got, you know, this one problem going on here that that's just, it's not working out. So, I do wanna thank our police department and our code enforcement staff for all the work that they've done to go out there and try to make this work. In the beginning, it did. Then the camp grew and kinda grew out of control in some ways. So, I think we can, I think we can do this. It seems to be a daunting task, but unfortunately, this is the world that we live in now in regards to government and how things have to operate and things that are put in your lap to do that normally, under the law, does not sit in your lap, but it's thrown at you now. So, thank you, and that's it for now.
Mr. Lamas, you have it?
Thank you. I just wanted to offer that there is help from the county. There's the continuum of care, which specifically addresses homelessness and the problems of homelessness in the county. There is a meeting tomorrow, actually, November 3rd, in-person BHRS conference room, number C207, at 301 East 13th Street in Merced, California. It's also on Microsoft Teams meeting, so virtually. So, this is a good spot to understand what the county's doing, what resources are available from the county, how they're networking with the state and other funding sources, and getting updates on their Tiny Homes project and other projects they're doing throughout the county. I know in Livingston, they have a homeless project specifically for veterans. So, I will hope to be able to attend this tomorrow and be able to provide some information so that we have a more accurate understanding of what's available to us and what other municipalities are doing to address this issue. So, there is some help out there. I think that we just have to engage a little more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamas. Go ahead. Did you want us? Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I don't know. It seems like if there was alternative sites, I'm pretty sure staff would've brought it forward. They've looked at every single piece of property in our city, and not one property they've made a recommendation for. Seems pretty obvious. We keep coming back to staff. Hey, when are you gonna give us more sites to look at? They don't. There's no other sites. No matter what you do, it all reverts back down to where they're at. The problem is, it's not where you put them, it's the manpower managing. After July 16th, it went downhill. I don't know how many of you guys have actually been out there on a weekly basis or even once a month, but it has gone downhill a lot because staff has relaxed on it. It looks horrible out there. It's a manpower issue. It's a management issue. It doesn't matter where you put it. You wanna put it down there off of Second Street? Well, guess what? Young's Air Conditioning, they're already having police calls in. They already have break-ins. They got three encampments over there. There's encampments all along the rail trail already. Why? No management on it. Doesn't matter where you put it, if you don't have the manpower and gonna fix it. So, when Chandra Lewis was up here, I had a phone conversation with her and Casey Miller. And I told them, I said, "If we move it, great. But what's to prevent them from coming back if we don't have management on it? If we don't have the manpower?" We need manpower first to control what we have, to calm it down, and then we can look at other ideas once we have the manpower. But everything you guys talk about all revolves around manpower. You wanna build tiny homes? Great. Who's gonna manage it? You wanna put them in a hotel? Who's gonna manage it? You need manpower. Let's start with that, and then we can have a further conversation. Other than that, we're just wasting time.
I can add to that, I think.
Just in partial response to what Ms. Lewis and Mr. Jones have said, we have met just this past week on a, an alternative to create, to take this in the main, not totally, but in the main, away from sworn personnel. That is one alternative. We're looking at, poor Brent, I keep winding him on these things, but we're looking at one full-time person. There's nothing but the unhoused, is I guess we call them now.
Yeah, we'll be discussing those.
Okay, in closed session?
I'm fine with all that, but at the same point, the residents from the ranch, from the whole park, they have stated when they do call police, they come out. They're reactive, right? So, I'd give them a whack.
Yeah.
On it. And having non-sworn officers out there, they can't really arrest. Gary, maybe you can fill us in on that? What would it take if someone's lighting a propane tank to arrest them and put them away? I guess for an hour overnight?
So, dependent upon the situation, council member, we use the scenario of an individual out at the camp has got a fire. They're messing around with a propane tank, sets it off, and it causes some damage. We just need someone to be a victim. And what I mean to say by that is we need someone to sign a citizen's arrest or someone to be a witness, depending upon what type of damages occur as a result of that activity. If it's a misdemeanor, perhaps we need to have someone sign a citizen's arrest form. If it's a felony, it reaches that felony level, we just need someone to tell us what happened, someone that can be a good witness so that we can make an arrest using the information that they provide to us so that we can take it to the district attorney's office for a filing.
Would a camera work?
A camera would, yeah. A camera would help us in some cases as long as we can identify the individual.
How long, if council said, let's approve a small budget to get a camera out there, maybe some lights out there, how long would that take to actually get and install?
Oh, I, we could do it in a matter of weeks.
That sounds like a fast start. If you guys wanna talk about that, I'd be all about it. But talking about moving it, you're just wasting time. Trying to get them to go single file across Mercy Springs and Pacheco with all their stuff? That's a nightmare. I don't think we have the manpower for that.
Ms. Lewis wants to make a comment? Go ahead, Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, well, we had the manpower to set the camp up and move them all there. And this is not against you, Chief.
No offense taken, council member.
We had the manpower to set it up, and I feel like this is just another excuse to keep it where it is. When the chief brought those various pieces of property to us about, you know, the city owns this, city owns that, Second Street, wherever, at the end of that presentation, it was on the agenda that council was supposed to have input as to what we wanted to do. And that was an offer to us. We just moved right along to the next thing. So, here we are, talking about this again. And so, I don't think it's unreasonable to look at a few pieces of land and possibly move it because, again, these residents feel that they're being terrorized. And we got another accusation tonight, you know, dealing with ethnic groups. And so, and I don't feel that that's the situation, but I do feel that these people have endured long enough. They endured it initially when it was there. We moved it out, and then we brought it back. So, you know, everybody has an emism problem. Nobody wants it in their backyard, regardless whether it's commercial or residential. Nobody wants homelessness there. And if this becomes a place where we, a position where we can't do anything about it, then disband it. Disband it. Because then we'll have them all over the place, and our police will be all over the place. But if we can find another piece of land, and we do have land that our city can put that encampment at, then I say, "Let's move it." And we didn't have the opportunity to give feedback to our staff the night when the chief presented that project to us. We just moved right along as if it was a report.
Mr. Jones? Chief, I might have one other question for you.
So, you're talking about the January 5th meeting? When that budget was proposed, that $20,000?
Yeah, there was a meeting, not too many meetings ago. About three meetings ago, was it? I identified a number of properties. Some were restricted because of land use covenants, but there were, I wanna say three. I don't recall off the top of my head that I identified as being reasonable solutions, reasonable alternatives that if council chose, could move the encampment to.
So, one-time expenditures, setting something up, is a lot different than everyday expenditures managing it? So, if we moved it somewhere, what's your plan for managing it? To keep it in the confined area or in the designated space? When you guys can come up with that, then I'll be open to listening about moving it.
Well, that's what I'm asking us to do, is come up with a plan. What you're sitting here doing is trying to defeat it, and I'm asking us as a council to work with staff to come up with a reasonable plan so that we can get this taken care of and try to do it as quickly as possible. That's what I'm asking for tonight.
Portable camera system? Like they have in parking lots, like Home Depot parking lot? That they've had to get? Would something like that help? You can move it anywhere, right?
Potentially, yeah. Potentially, that's an added level of security. We've increased patrols out there, certainly, over the past two or three months. Volunteer patrols. We have a lot of extra patrols going out there, 2151.
So, some of the land that you identified in the interior of the city, would it be easier for your staff to get there if something happened?
Well, certainly, the response time would be quicker just because of its geographic location in the city. I mean, that's the easiest way to answer the question, yes. Yeah.
The three that you were talking about are mainly down the rail trail along Second Street and all that, though, correct?
You have to forgive me. I wanna say the three ideal locations that I identified during my presentation were closest to the new police department.
Correct.
And if I remember, I called them out.
Which I think we already have five encampments down there now, as it is. So, how many do we have sitting out at the actual encampment? How many?
It can range. It can change day to day just because of the nature of that location. I would say, on average, we have about 15.
15?
15 individuals, yeah.
And I'm gonna kinda get to my side now that, and we can still jump back and forth. I'm just gonna try to give me my opinion. We all want to do something for this encampment. It's not that we don't wanna do it. It's, but we still do have limitations. And I agree, if we just disband it, before we put that encampment out there, they were already spread out all across the fence as it was on both sides, there and behind Home Depot. What we tried to do with encampment, put the fence around it, we tried to get them away to the fence to try to alleviate some of the problems. We're not gonna get away from the problems. But we had an email that was sent to everybody probably this last week with all of our officers. They're actually even trying to come up with some solutions. So, we're all trying to come to solutions. The disbanding them, you know, we're still gonna have to work together. We gotta keep some type of encampment, whether we move it over here, over there. And even in their emails, it all comes down to manpower. The manpower, we're gonna have to actually support it and take care of it. Either way.
I can make.
I, you guys don't know how many times my, even my location, so if we moved it downtown, my location, my cameras go off every night. They beep every night. So, we deal with it. But there's nothing I can do. Because I know there's nothing. Yeah, they go in there, they take, they get their wood, and they go about their business. So, it's gonna happen all down, whether they, at least, they don't break into my place, but they get into just my outer perimeter of it. I hate to see it go down that area and do the same thing. But again, we're still gonna have to have the manpower to try to keep it under somewhat control. Now, that email suggested, you know, a non-commissioned officer working several hours a night, a camera where dispatch could actually see and monitor, maybe a couple of them that, you know, can watch. You know, we're all for trying to do what we can Uh, you know, we're all for trying to do what we can to help this, help the, the trailer park out. That is actually, to me, the biggest property that we have out there. Is it something, I don't know, maybe we move it a little further away, I, I'm not sure. I did sit out there Monday night, later night, trying to go over my sickness. And this is on Halloween night, and I, I, I don't believe during the time I sat out there, I, I, I didn't even care in, anything that's going on. I try to sit out there at least once a week, just to try to, which the one lady said, I'm not sure where the heck come from, because I, I go out there at nighttime and I don't see anybody. I can see a shadow walk across, and that's about it. But I try to watch out there, because I, you know, I, I will report it too if I'm out there and I see something going on. But just to let them know that I do try to go out there myself to see. But yes, we do have to try to come up with some solutions, and right now, the quickest and the fastest solution I think we could do is probably to get some type of camera system out there where dispatch can actually see what's, at least get some type of idea, even whatever camp it is, to see what's going on if something strikes up. Someone lights a fire, which I'm not sure, do we have these warming fires that they're able to?
So technically, most fires in the city of Los Manos are illegal, except when you're barbecuing food. Residents can do that, whether you're homeless or you're, you're not. During the winter month, months, there were some concessions by the fire department to allow individuals who are suffering from homelessness to have small fires to keep themselves warm. To keep themselves warm. And I think sometimes those fires get out of hand and/or are too close to proximity to their, their belongings, their tent, their structures, and inadvertently, things start on fire. Hate to see it happen, but it does, happens all the time, so.
Chief, how many propane tanks have been blown in the fires? Is it countless, or is it a couple?
I couldn't even begin to answer that question for you, Councilmember.
Whether it's low or high?
No, I, I couldn't, I, generally, the fire department handles those. We can get you some of that data, I just don't have it available to me right now.
I'm just wondering if that is actually a, a validated, a ongoing occurrence out there? Or if it was a one-time thing or a couple times?
I, I couldn't even, I wouldn't even want to try to answer that one at this point.
Well, I, I do understand that we do need to come up with some type of solutions. We need to come up, you know.
So staff is and has been working on a plan to do a couple of things. One of them has to do with a security guard at night. Another one has to do with the cameras, lighting, portable lighting and portable, portable cameras. And we're just, in the final stretches of getting that accomplished, so that we can bring it forward to you as a, most likely a budget amendment, to make the purchase and/or the rental.
So I'm, I'm waiting on a phone, a text message back. I actually, uh, got to meet with our Assemblyman right now, Mr. Gray, several weeks ago. And, you know, I actually talked to him about money. He said there is money there, he says you just have to go get it. And he's supposed to get back with me. Of course, you know, he's very tied up right now, campaigning for Congress, but he said he would get back with me to tell us what, how we can go about helping us get this. He had actually told me that he had actually worked with our previous city manager, you know, on monies, you know, to help us out actually with Operation Room Key and everything. So he's still involved in trying to get us the money.
There is a lot of money at the state level available through programs like Project Home Key. That's a permanent housing solution. One of the steps that you took in the direction, in that direction the other night was the approval of our attempt to apply for the local housing allocation. That helps us, like we talked about, create that seed money. Project Home Key, the tiny homes that the gentleman brought up tonight, we've had multiple conversations with the gentleman who does that. It is one of the options. They take time. It's taken a city on the other side of the river here over years to get it accomplished, and they have multiple staff members working on it. We're thankful that we got the PLHA approval so that we can apply for that, because that's step one. And then we will get to step two. The idea of more staffing to address this issue, really appreciate that. I can tell you at the staff level, we're very happy that there's a consideration of that. And we need to continue that, because that's what it requires. It requires more boots on the ground, it requires more people behind a computer filing for grants and writing grants and applying for programs, so that we can get the funding to do this. But it doesn't happen overnight. That's the trouble that we are having, is that none of the solutions that we can prevent, present to you tonight will happen tomorrow, next month, or even likely next year. So it's a day-by-day approach to addressing hotspots as they come up, issues as they come up within the legal realms that we can, and then within the legal framework that we have to work with right now. And it is, it is very tough to deal with.
So Chief, another quick question I want to say real fast, on these fires prosecuting, which you said, you know, if they do it inside the trailer park, they get a citation, the homeless. We could probably write a citation to them every day, every day. We, we're, we're not gonna get anything out of it, are we?
So the illegal fires, you could go out there, and a typical scenario is the fire is just far enough away from a camp, and we get there, it's either out, or maybe it's going, or maybe it's in the dumpster. And we have to identify the source of who started the fire, so that we can take someone to jail, write someone a ticket, create a complaint with the district attorney's office. So like a lot of things that happen these days, no one ever sees or hears anything. So we put the fire out, tell people not to do that again, and we go on our way. Because people don't cooperate with us in our investigations, to try and reduce the incidence of those things from occurring. It's the sad reality of dealing with this population sometimes.
And, and with that, with that being said, you know, we're right back to square one, because all the monies that are out there, the monies that the Assemblyman is telling you about, they all revert back to Project Room Keys and Home Key.
Yeah.
That, that money is not for people who are sleeping out on the ground, lighting fires, or doing whatever. So the one good thing.
For solutions, it's not just for Operation Room Key, you know, there's money out there.
But it's solutions to get them off the street into something.
To, to do whatever we can to find out what we can do with the money.
And, and the population that we're dealing with right now is not that population. Or else, you know, we, we didn't use up all the rooms in, in Project Room Key.
Oh, yeah, man.
We had a lot of rooms that were vacant. If, if this particular population of people could go in, they would have been in there. But that's not, that's not the population. So again, when, when we talk about lots of money out there, yes, there probably is lots of money. As the chief says, it, you know, it takes all these steps, A, B, and all these different plans to get from point A to point B, and a couple of years could go by, and your situation's getting worse. But we're talking about a particular population right now.
So if I can clarify a little bit, one of the things, one of the laws that we, the rules that came down with the Boise case is that unless we have adequate shelter, you can't criminalize the fact that someone's homeless. Having said that, once we do have adequate shelter, those individuals who are more problematic to us, it allows us to take further steps to stop them from doing some of the things that they're doing. You still have to overcome the hurdle of being homeless is not a crime. And so the, the type of action that we take, as far as arresting people, gets touchy, especially in this current climate. But it allows us the ability to have more tools and options available to us at that moment when we have the housing. So housing is absolutely crucial in helping us solve this problem in a lo, a longer-term fashion than the day-by-day. So I'm a big proponent of the housing side of it, because it avails us of more opportunities to say, yeah, you can't do that anymore. Whereas right now, we're kind of hamstrung by the fact that we don't have the housing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so as long as you have beds available, then you play by a totally different set of rules, essentially.
It, it's.
Whether they want to go into the shelter place or not.
Yeah. Yeah, it's different now. I, I want to, I want to make sure I establish realistic expectations. These days, cops are going caught hands-on, less and less, with individuals who are experiencing homelessness, even when you have available housing, because it's just, it's just not the way to handle business. So that's why we have our code enforcement team do a vast majority of our outreach and our work in the area of code, or homelessness, because they don't think like cops do. It's different, it's better that way.
Mr. Lewis?
I just wanted to, again, Mr. Romick, regarding management, uh, these, again, depending on which way you go, the, the management of these sites would be managed by Merced County Rescue Mission, not the city.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The programs are there, they're good.
So it's identified, so that's not an issue. It's managed by Merced County Rescue Mission. They take care of the management of those sites. So again, that, that question is.
They're just one of many vendors that are out there and available to do that oversight, that outreach side of it. For Project Room Key, it was the Community Action Agency.
Correct.
They're another vendor that's out there, so, yeah.
That aspect is, is answered.
Yeah, we separate ourselves from that. And, and as the gentleman said tonight, they eventually become self-sustaining through HUD vouchers.
Right, correct.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And again, that takes the burden off of us, as far as the management and the funding. I'd still like to move with getting more direction from you, Chief, if you would, as to identifying those possible, again, possible alternatives to what we have right now, to move towards that, so that we definitively say, we've gone down that road, it doesn't work. Because right now, we're still kind of, we have those sites identified, but we haven't definitively said, this is why it will or will not work. So if we could, me, I'd like to know which one of those sites would be the most probable? And if not, then we need to know why. At least the folks at the Mobile Home Park need to know why we're not moving on it.
So I don't want to circumvent the process that you're going through tonight. I will say that in the last presentation, we identified, I want to say up to three, if not four, that you can move them to tomorrow. They don't have land use covenants, they don't have any issues to deal with as far as the land use. We've just got to have the money to put up a fence, if that's what you choose to do, and get them over there. I will tell you that one of the fears that I have is that you're gonna have the same issues everywhere you move them. And until we solve the bigger dilemma, the bigger problem of the housing issue, we're gonna have a problem with those individuals back at that, that property again. That's my, that's been my biggest fear since day one, is that they're gonna go back to that piece of property.
Again, at this point, it's just saying, we've worked through that. I think that if anything, we need to provide those residents with these answers, that we've actually problem-solved it, instead of saying, well, no, nothing's gonna work, let's move on to the next topic. And I think that's not the right approach to them, because they deserve to know that we've actually took this to ground. And we, we've said, no, it doesn't work, and this is why. Or it's, if we do this, this is what it's gonna take in manpower, this is what it's gonna take in police fire response, and this is the, the problems we see with happening, because otherwise, we're saying that this is the best solution. And obviously, it's not. And so we need to be able to provide them as to why, or why not, we're taking action or not taking action.
Yeah, and I think that's what, that's what this discussion tonight is about.
And again, and that, again, that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get to the nexus of the, of the issue here. Now, as far as permanent housing, I think we took a big step last meeting of, of saying, yes, one way or the other, go this way. So that's been, that's been worked on. So we're working on that, but right now, it's the immediate issue of public safety and addressing their concerns, and giving them those answers that they deserve to know that we, again, we've taken this all the way to where we can take it, and this is the final solution. Thank you, Chief.
Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, Chief, would an ad hoc committee, not anything that's drawn out for months and months, but maybe a couple of meetings with you and some council members and staff, to just kind of work through this and, and see what we can come up with and report back to council?
Yeah, I don't want to.
As to what the probabilities are?
Yeah, I, I, anything's, anything's possible, Councilmember, in regards to that, to that question. So I hope that's a, that's a good answer. I just don't want to get in front of the conversation and the agenda item that you guys have tonight, so.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, I'm actually good, Mayor Protim. I don't see this going anywhere tonight, so.
All right. You actually said it, Chief. This is what I, I'm afraid of, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to moving it. The problem is, the ones that are out there that are, they would return. And now, if we don't have someone out there that we'd like, like the cameras, or like the, or, or non-off, non-commissioned officer, it, it's not gonna stop. And now, it, it could actually get to be worse than what it is actually is. Uh, because we'd be more focusing over here where we actually, but the ones that are out there now, you move them over towards where the police station is, they're not gonna stay there, because now they're too close to what, so they're gonna, they're gonna go right back. They're gonna migrate right back. I like, and you know, this, I mean, if there's a solution, you know, and I'm sure we've gotten emails, we're gonna, unfortunately, it's not gonna happen overnight. We'd like for it to happen overnight. But yes, we gotta keep moving forward on what we, what kind of solutions we can come up with. And that, you know, right now, I, I mean, if it only took just a couple of weeks to get some type of camera system up there so we could catch the ones, so we can actually prosecute some of these that are actually doing the things that are, you know, that they are saying out there, you know, maybe that's a good start. I, I think maybe if they do get prosecuted a couple of times, then maybe they will stop doing the act, probably not. But just in case. What I do wish before I stop right here is, I spoke to a couple of them actually before the last meeting, and I actually asked them if they would stay to the end of the meeting, so they could listen to that. We do discuss this, that it's not that we just sit up here and ignore them. Or do they actually watch the YouTube video later? And none of them watched the YouTube videos. And you see now, we don't have anybody up here now to actually hear that we actually do discuss this. So right now, they still think that we, we don't care, because they didn't hear anything during public forum, which important, and that's where I kind of feel I wish they would either say, which I know some of these meetings are a little bit long, and I understand, but, I wish somehow they could see that we do try to come up with some type of solutions, and we're not gonna stop now, we're gonna keep trying to come up with some type of solutions to, to figure this problem out. And hopefully, Ms. Lewis, I hope we're gonna go in the right direction.
I, I still, the, the chief has given us at least three properties to look at. I'd like that to be considered. I, I don't, you know, I don't know how we're gonna post cameras up, where are we gonna put them? They're gonna see them out there and tear them down, because they know that we're looking at them. So we, we need to come up with a viable alternative and come up with it pretty quickly. So my, my recommendation is that if, if we don't put an ad hoc committee together to look at all the viable solutions, bring it back, you know, put it at the top of the, the agenda, so that when they're sitting here, they can hear it, not at the bottom, and see where we can go from there. But I'm, I'm still in favor of moving the encampment. You know, it, it, it's easy to say they're gonna go back, we don't know if they're gonna go back. But if that's not a place where they can stay, then, you know, we have to keep moving them back to where they can stay. You know, at, at one point, they were all over the place, and 15 of them, roughly 15 of them, are staying in the encampment where they are now. And there's still others that are camping out throughout our community. I remember when I went out on a ride-along with the chief, when this camp first opened, our code enforcement people were cleaning up along the, uh, uh, trail right behind, um, well, and, and it's, I guess where the rail, railroad is, Save Mark, yeah, in front of Save Mark. And I think that's the railroad property, not the rail trail, but the railroad. And just cleaning up an encampment there. So our code enforcement people are just, you know, working overtime, trying to stay ahead of keeping our city clean from encampments. And not everybody, you know, 15 are there, how many, how many else are in the community? You know, what's the number out there? And again, you can give the county a bunch of kudos for housing and for trailers and tiny homes and all that stuff. My position is that the county is not giving them the mental health services that they need. And the state is putting that all back at the laps of the local jurisdictions. And you can cross your i's and, you know, cross your t's and dot your i's, but that's the bottom line of it. The county is not working with us. They go out there and hold their hand, and if they don't want anything, fine. I, you know, it, it's just that all the powers have been taken away to make people who need help get the help they need, so that they can be reconstituted and mainstream back into society to have some sort of life. But right now, they don't have a life, and neither do the people who live in the trailers have a life, you know, for, for whatever fears, from needles being thrown, you know, for not staying, you know, not being able to sleep at night. And, and we need to find another alternative. So yes, the county has a hand in this.
All right, thanks, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones, one more time, and then, okay, Mr. Wellman, go ahead, your final thought.
Thank you. Mr. Protem and members of the council, I, may I just try a couple of things on for size here, okay? I, I hear about the placement on the agenda. Is, is it possible to pu- put the unhoused population right after the public opportunity to speak?
Right after the.
Does that work, Lucy? Okay. My respectful suggestion is that if you wanted to appear, that's probably as close to the top of the agenda as you could make it? Okay. If, if that's okay, we'll go ahead and schedule this right after the public opportunity to speak, and all these folks can get up and speak, and then boom, we, we hit. Second thing is that we have had discussions on adding personnel, to deal with personnel. It may not be the right solution, but it's been discussed, and we're trying to look at cost related to sworn personnel coming out and servicing this particular population. You're going to, you're going to be getting that tonight, right, Brent? Okay, that's two. Three, I, I, I think, again, it's important to note, I, I've run the Human Services Agency twice, okay? I started out here in sixty-seven as a social worker, so I know the population. You're talking about three conditions. We've done study after study after study. They don't change. Number one, substance addiction. Number two, developmental disability, meaning mental or physical. We know that, that developmental disability affects the general population in at least fifteen percent of us, okay? Some of us have physical, some of us have mental, some of us have a combination of both. And three is just, I won't say vanilla, but just plain mental illness, whether it's paranoid schizophrenia or other conditions that require more treatment. Now, frequently, you have all three of them together. You have developmental disability, substance abuse, and yes, thank you, mental illness, all wrapped into one. So these, I mean, it, the homeless population is not going away, we all know that. And I've, I've said this many times to, to Chief, he's probably sick of hearing the word. But the, the, the approach here has, whatever you do, has to be relentless. You can never give up, you can never take anything for granted, you can never, ever quit riding herd. You got to be out there twenty-four, seven. So I, I know you, some of you may not want to hear that. I didn't, I don't necessarily want to say it. But it's, since the Boise decision especially, which is, what is it, the Ninth District or the Third District Court? Ninth? Homelessness per se is not a crime. It's not a crime. It can't be a crime by itself, unless they're out there beating somebody up or causing a fracas of some kind. You can't arrest them for simply being homeless. Or frankly, I would say just four fifteen P C, disturbing the peace. Am I right on that? Code section, is that still what it is? Yep, okay. That's it. That's my say. You do with it what you like.
I believe we have our direction that we'll get it back on the agenda with those locations. So we just need, oh, go ahead.
Yes. I'd like to recommend that, well, there are two options, that staff look at the viability of moving an encampment to one of the three locations that the chief gave us. And the other would be the cost of leaving it where it is. And that would include cameras, security, whether we need to move it a little bit further out from, from the residents in the same area. And any other things that the chief can think of as to the reason to keep it there. So it, it's going to come down to not just personnel, but cost. So that, that would be my recommendation. And, and give him a, how long would you need, chief, to come back with some recommendations to the council? Two meetings, okay. So that would be?
Two meetings. Two meetings?
December seventh, maybe? Okay. Well, December seventh, and if he can do it earlier, he said he'll, he'll let staff know, so he can put it on the agenda. And that'd be put at the top of the agenda.
The next meeting would be the sixteenth, if we really shut. And that's, that's probably a lot of time. So you don't want to make a motion, and then what's?
Yes, that, that is my motion.
Okay, do I have a second for that? Mr. Lummis?
I'll second that, thank you.
Everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
No oppose? Okay, so the recommendation is for those two possibilities, we'll be back on agenda within the next second meeting or before. Now, we'll get to move on to item seventeen. I may jump over to Ms. Lewis to see if she has any report from them.
Fifteen.
Or did I skip one? Oh, the public notice. We'll turn to Ms. Helms.
So we have two reports. The first is a mobile food vendor. This would be for an ice cream truck in the public right of way. This is for Graciela Tapia, doing business as Palateria Tapia. And then the next is another mobile food vendor. This is for a catering truck for Tacos Valentina. They'd be located at eight thirty I Street. The public hearings will be held on Wednesday, November ninth, at six P M. here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. Now, we'll move to number, item number seventeen, and jump over to Ms. Lewis.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll start off with M C A G, and Bill, jump in here if I don't state this properly, because this was kind of a, an item that I attended and didn't, none of us had knowledge on in regards to this happening. And at the last meeting, there, there's this issue around the joint powers authority with M C A G, which expires at the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. And there are a couple of components to that. Each, each city, when it comes to the joint powers, has a vote. So we have six cities, I believe it is, and the county. The county is one vote, Los Bantos is one vote, and every other city in the county is one vote. But there's, there has been for a long time a fight over that particular way of looking at this joint powers of authority, which is each entity having one vote. The other part is, is that the agreement that was worked out wasn't agreeable or acceptable in some situations by all of the cities. And so the cities had some adjustments they wanted to make to the joint powers authority agreement before they moved forward, but the county was resisting to do that. And which means that it would give the county the authority that they've had for so many years. One of the things was that, that was recommended is that having this agreement run for ten years and then look at it again, because things can change after ten years. The count, the M C A G wants a, a longer contract, and I think the county probably agreed with that. So in short, what happened is that at the meeting, it was finally agreed upon that all of the city attorneys, county council, I think maybe a couple of members from county council, and Emily Hayden, who is the attorney for M C A G, will be coming together to work with the cities over the issues that they had regarding the joint powers of agreement that was written, and some cleanup language in there that apparently was a bit archaic. So hopefully, that will be done, I think, sometime in December or by December, Bill?
So we already have a meeting scheduled for Monday for all the attorneys. And so we'll be discussing each of the issues regarding the new agreement. But you're right, it's a joint powers agreement that essentially forms M C A G, and it's terminating in the summer of two thousand twenty-three. And so the cities wanted some input into the details of what that agreement was going to say. The M C A G board, if they had their way, they would just kind of throw it out there and leave it, leave it as it is. But the cities have some issues with it, and so we're hoping to get started working on those issues on Monday.
Very good. And, and as we move forward, you know, I, I know under Mr. Volalta, when he was mayor, he brought back things that were of critical importance, that the council needed to know about M C A G. So I, I hope that as, as we move forward with the election and the bringing on of the new mayor, that this will be an important factor for that person to be able to bring to the, the city council things that we may need to vote on as a whole, to send him back with a, uh, an answer to M C A G on things that might be critical and, you know, that the, the city is behind, behind the mayor as he moves forward, rather than the mayor just taking it upon himself to make the decision. In regards to the San Joaquin air, the San Joaquin Valley Regional Air Board, I, I think the only thing I have to say, you know, right now, is that there's, again, a lot of federal money out there, state money. And there's been a new allocation of money for buses for school districts, and that's roughly around four hundred thousand dollars per pu- per bus, which basically pays for the bus. And, and that money is, it, it, there's no matching money required to, to be allocated that, but it's on a first come, first served basis. And the big cities are out there gobbling up this money, and the smaller communities are left behind. So I, you know, I hope some members from our school board are listening tonight. And maybe I'll, I'll appear at one of their meetings to let them know. I, I had talked to staff. We went to all the cities, with the exception of Dos Palace, they never invited us to come. But this year, I'd like to make a commitment to go to the, the school boards within the cities, because that's where I represent, not the counties, but within the cities, and let them know what monies are available out there for them to upgrade their equipment, especially the school buses that are not, non-polluting. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, and thank you for showing up there for me. Now, we'll move on to council member reports. We'll go with Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Actually, I got a question for council member Yamas. In your candidate statement that was published in the newspaper, you put, quoting you, "special interests such as housing developers who have hand-selected candidates and fund their campaigns." Can you elaborate on that? That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr., Ms. Lewis, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes. I, I think I made my report tonight. The one thing I would like to recommend is that all of us who sit on committees or who are in lieu should be able to give a report. You know, we, some of us have been elected to sit on committees that are governmental committees. Some of us have been appointed to sit on committees, and I think it's appropriate that we hear from anybody who sits on a committee to give us a report about what's going on at that committee that we've appointed them to. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Lummis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just want to say thank you to Joe Heim and the Parks Recreation Department for everything they're doing for the community. It really is great to see folks coming out to these trunk or treat events. The kids having fun, people enjoying themselves. Again, people reconnecting with each other. I think that's widely important. That's really all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lummis. And I want to thank all the presenters tonight, the speakers, all the staff. Everybody did a wonderful job. Also want to say thank you to, how, how do you feel? That's your first meeting, Mr. Tuella? Glad to have you there on the end of the, in the bench there.
It's been a long night, but it's been a long couple of days trying to get acclimated, so yes.
Roger that.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to closed session, item nineteen. Item A, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven dot six. Agency designated representatives, interim city manager, Willman, city attorney, Vaughn, city clerk, human resource director, Maloney, interim finance director, Mr. Coon, legal counsel, Tufo, and employee organizations, Los Bantos Police Officers Associations, L B P O A, Los Bantos Police Sergeants Associations, L B P S A, Los Bantos Firefighters Associations, L B F F A, Los Bantos Police Dispatchers Community Service Officers Associations, L B P D C S O A, Los Bantos Public Employee Union, Public Works, Local One slash A F S C M E, and unprecedented miscellaneous employees. And also, item B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to five four nine five six dot nine, be one potential case. Once we're turned, we'll give our opinions.